Good evening. I want to welcome everybody to the October 15th, 2009 regular town council meeting. Meeting called for 7:00 PM. It's 7:09. Want to welcome everybody. Meeting officially called at order. Town Clerk, can you call roll please?
Yes, Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
Here. We could all please rise and Chief, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure.
Can everyone please face the flag and repeat after me?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Once again, I want to welcome everybody and welcome back. Hope everyone's had a good, short month. First on the agenda are some presentations. First presentation is an Iguana abatement question and answer forum. Do we have someone?
Can we switch them to North Miami Beach first and then the Iguana second?
Sure. Okay. Second, we have a North Miami Beach water update. Someone from North Miami Beach here. If you could go to the podium, please identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, residents of Golden Beach. My name is Samuel Samacuana, Deputy Director of NMB Water. Thank you for allowing us to speak briefly. Let me introduce you to Leonard Schrodin. He's our Program Manager for NMB Water. We have a small presentation for you guys.
No. No.
All right. So this is going to be brief and concise. First of all, I want to thank you guys for having us here tonight. It's our goal to always provide amazing service to our customers and as valued customers of NMB Water, we want to be here to answer any questions you have, provide updates as regularly as you would like. I want to let you know that if you have any questions or concerns about your bill, we're going to be available in the Town Manager's office in the back. We can pull up your account. We can sign you up for alerts. We can answer any questions you have about your bills, anything like that. Tonight, we're equipped and ready to do that. We're going to talk about three things tonight. One is the reestablishment of meters where we've had stormwater intrusion into the meter boxes. We're working with the city now to finalize a plan to adjust those to grade so they won't have the problem with the flooding in the meter boxes. We have a new antenna coming for the Itron system that we've talked about previously where you guys can sign up for alerts and you can monitor your water usage real time. One of the key ingredients of that is to be able to have a tower installed. And actually, we're proposing two towers, but this is phase one. Those first towers are going to make a major improvement. We're going to talk about that and we are going to talk about an approved ordinance to go back to quarterly billing. As far as the sunken meter boxes, that was identified by the Town Manager through some of the residents that expressed a concern. We went out and did a complete evaluation of all the meter boxes in the town of Golden Beach. We rated them on a low severity up to a high severity based on the safety concerns and also how much water and that kind of thing. We've identified 17 meter boxes we feel like needs to be adjusted. As far as the antenna, we've already went out to bid. We have selected a contractor to do the installation of antenna. Before that, we submitted the plans to the town of Golden Beach. They reviewed the plans, provided comments. We've addressed all those and now we have a permit. We're working with the contractor now to get them under contract with their insurance and bond and all that kind of stuff. We hope by the end of the month, we'll have the contractor on board to install the antenna. It should take about 30 days to complete the work. We want to talk to you about a new ordinance to go back to quarterly billing. Your last monthly bill will be going out tomorrow and then we'll go to quarterly billing. So you'll get your bill for October, November, December, right at the beginning of the next year.
You were on quarterly, went to monthly. Why are you going back to quarterly?
Well, it was by ordinance, so the City Commission elected to go to monthly billing based off of feedback. They thought that that was the right way to go and then over time, they discovered it was best to go back to quarterly. So they just recently passed the ordinance to go back.
Let's be a little bit more transparent about the issue. So when the North Miami Beach Commission decided to go the monthly, there's a fee that was not being adequately collected, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
That caused some significant financial implications to the city and...
Which city? Our city.
No, North Miami Beach. Remember, we do not set water rates in Golden Beach. We are strictly a retail consumer. So our council has no authority over how they operate, how they're managed, who they hire to manage their system, how their rates are charged, how the billing occurs. No authority whatsoever over the water utility, which a lot of our residents don't understand that. They are strictly a retail partner of the city. But there was a rate collection issue that was triggered when they went from quarterly to monthly. And I don't know the mechanics of that rate, but it caused some issues at the city and also it was more difficult for some of the end users to pay on a monthly basis versus... If I'm misspeaking, correct me, but this is... I'm trying to be as politically sensitive to the issue because it is a very hot topic issue in North Miami Beach. So the City Council of North Miami Beach decided that it was in their best fiduciary responsibility and best for their residents and some of their wholesale customers to go back to quarterly versus monthly. And they took action and voted on that and it passed. In addition to that, I'm not sure if it's passed yet or is proposed, there's a proposed rate increase to all of their users, not just Golden Beach, but to all of their users. Has that passed yet?
It has.
And so part of the...
Is that in your presentation?
It's not.
No.
We asked...
It's in my bill.
No, I was wondering, is that in the presentation or no?
Yes, we have one slide for the... I can tell you the rate increase.
Yeah, so they'll talk about the increase. But again, this council has no authority over what setting the rate needed to manage and fund both their capital needs and their ongoing operational needs.
This council.
This council. I will say this, in the interest of public record and information and transparency, there are some wholesale customers that have either initiated or have threatened to initiate lawsuits against North Miami Beach as it relates to the rate increase. Miami Gardens being one of them and others that are either discussing it or potentially have already filed. I have not recommended our council get involved from a legal perspective as it relates to the rate because we will benefit from whatever the other councils... We have a clause in our franchise agreement with North Miami Beach that we benefit from whatever the rates are of the other cities. So if another city who's spending thousands of dollars suing them because the rates not fair prevails, we benefit from that. So it does not behoove us to start our own litigation and so that's why I'm not recommending that. I think that we should just ride the wave of what's happening. But I think it's fair that we need to understand and we didn't bring North Miami Beach here today to kind of beat them up or anything, but we wanted our residents to have two things. We know that there has been a big issue as it relates to our billing and a lot of our residents have had increased bills and Mr. Glidden from our Resident Services Department has been working with a lot of residents who have had high bills and North Miami Beach has been very cooperative in that. Sometimes the resolution to those issues haven't been amicable to our residents or agreeable to our residents. And so we're trying to just remind the community in terms of what role we play as a local government with a utility that we have a franchise retail agreement with. And North Miami Beach also has some statutory requirements that they're not just... In the old days, so remember the old days when you filled your pool, you were allowed to call for a pool credit and they were able to write off water costs? Well, the state changed the laws on that. So writing off water is no longer very acceptable to the state. So all those rules have changed because the water needed to be treated to be delivered to your house and so there was a cost for that. So even though you didn't consume it, it was still delivered. And so the rules have changed. So their hands are tied now in terms of how many credits they can give you if credits can be issued. And so that's why tonight, they're here to also meet one-on-one with residents and they'll continue to meet with you daily, monthly, weekly, as they have been doing with Michael. But we wanted to have an open forum where we talked about what are some of the bigger issues that we're having in town, the submerged meters, that when you go onto your online portal and one day has one number, the next day is triple the number and you're saying, "How does that happen?" Well, it happens because there's not enough antenna coverage. So part of the discussion is we're adding one antenna, we're going to possibly look at a second antenna so you have a more consistent reading so that when you're looking on your online dashboard or your app, you see a better picture. But I also wanted to be fair in terms of discussing why they're going to back the quarterly and the rate increase.
One question I have is you said that they're working together, North Miami Beach and this new company in terms of retail. I want to be clear about something. Are they working together or is this new company part ownership?
So I didn't say that. I'm not sure how that was... So North Miami Beach years ago decided to outsource to a third-party vendor to manage their system.
Manage it, okay.
With North Miami Beach still being the owner and still having the authority over the contract. That has nothing to do with our retail or wholesale relationship. So that's independent of us. So they decided from a business model that it was better to outsource. So instead of having water employees in-house, they're going to outsource that completely. The new company took on all of their employees, I believe all of them, and then the city retained management to oversee and manage the contract. But that has nothing to do with our retail wholesale relationship. Some cities, Miami Gardens, which other... Who are your wholesale customers?
Miami Gardens, Sunny Isles Beach, Aventura.
So they have a wholesale relationship. We have a retail relationship. Here's the difference. So the city of Sunny Isles buys the water wholesale from North Miami Beach and then the city staff or North Miami Beach staff provides a service and they... So Sunny Isles becomes the retailer. The city of Sunny Isles is the retailer. The city of Miami Gardens is the retailer. We are not the retailer. We contract directly through a franchise agreement, just like we do with Tico Gas FPL. So the reason those cities are wholesalers, they tend to want to market up, own the system, keep the asset. We donated our asset, actually, we didn't donate it. We were paid for our asset when we delivered our asset to North Miami Beach and asked them to be our retail customer. Why? We don't maintain our system. When there's a break, they come and fix it. We don't have to fix it. When there's an issue with water, they do that. So we have a retail relationship. There are wholesale relationships as they just explained, but ours is a retail relationship.
Go on.
Yeah, go on. I'll make it quick. So the one-month versus the three-month, and I know this has happened to everybody who's been here a long time. You get a leak on that and I know now we said, "Well, you should be tracking your water." In the old days, you got a leak on the fifth day of your new water bill. Three months later, you got your new water bill. "Oh, got a water leak. Oh, well, you know, we'll kind of maybe do something, but if you have a sewer system, you know, you're going to be charged for that water and you're not going to discover it for what I think is 75 days." So unless we were getting really hammered on a one-month basis, I kind of liked seeing that one-month bill because I could say, "Oh, you know..."
It's the other way around. So the city decided, let the city decide, explain why this was...
I'll explain to you in a very brief, concise way why we went back to quarterly billing. When the City Commission of North Miami Beach decided to go to monthly billing instead of quarterly billing, the base rate was not changed. Therefore, the rest, the customers that were used to paying a base rate for three months, now are paying the same rate, base rate every month. Commission felt that that was not the best way of doing businesses, so they went back to quarterly billing, keeping the base rate at almost the same amount.
Why would the base rate change if you're using the same amount of water?
Well, the base rate, when you go from quarterly billing to single monthly billing, let's say a single-family home, it's $10.70. Instead of paying $10.70 for three months, now you're paying the $10.75 every single month. So essentially it triples because the base rate.
Those questions, the North Miami Beach Commission has the control and oversight on and they've already ruled on that matter.
And now we went back to quarterly billing, correct?
Well, it seems like they were very lenient and listened to the citizens.
As it relates to the leakage issue, that's why in slide number two, by us adding more antennas, you can check your daily consumption, daily, weekly, monthly on the app and see what you're consuming. So there's more information available to you should you choose to look at that information, right?
In addition to...
Sorry.
In addition to that, the electronic meters are smart, meaning that when they register an extremely high usage that is abnormal to your consumption, they notify you to whichever telephone number that you put in or to whichever email that you put in.
When did that start?
That's not true. No, but well...
When did that start?
I get...
That started, when did it start?
I'm not sure.
It already started. It's already been implemented.
Let them do the presentation.
Okay, just ask them when it started. What we have is flyers of how all of us could register and see that information live and be able to receive these notices automatically. But you have to register and we'll be more than happy to register. We have a setup or office or computers to be able to do that and we also have instructions on how to register.
Similar to our code Red.
Exactly.
Similar to our code Red. You have to register for the service in order to receive the service.
Yes.
All right, go on.
Notification services. So the last slide is our utility rate increase ordinance, which is, as you know, maintenance costs, water, pipes, water pumps, water plants, wells, cost a lot of money to maintain. Whenever there's a break, we have to go out there and repair them. Therefore, we have to, we did a rate analysis and we had to increase our utility rates. For the single-family homes, low usage, there's actually going to be a savings. The rate was modified to have a more effect on the high usage. Therefore, for the single-family homes, conservation-minded residents, it will actually be a savings.
So what's the percent increase?
The percent increase averages to 4.5% for the high usage.
Everyone in Golden Beach consider yourself a high-use rate user. So in Golden Beach, your water bills, for the most part, I would say 95% of our residents are considered high usage in Golden Beach. Look at a 4% rate increase in your water bill. 4. what?
Five.
4.5% increase in your water bill. That this City Council has no authority in setting that rate and I want to, we have to be very clear about that. So the North Miami Beach City Council and in their water bills, they informed you of the meetings that they were going to be held to talk about rate increases. It was all through public ordinance readings that it was listed in the paper. Unfortunately, or unfortunately, you know, if you didn't participate, you weren't heard, but the council already voted on this new rates, on these new rates and we wanted to make sure that our residents...
North Miami Beach Council.
Correct. The North Miami Beach Council already voted on the new rates. And so I wanted to make sure that our residents understand the relationship between the parties, what's going on and we're going to have a few minutes to talk about because we have had some residents who have had some major, major water bill issues that we've been working with North Miami Beach for months now and trying to resolve and to some of our residents, it's still not resolved. And we're trying to figure out how to bring resolution. A lot of it started to happen when the new automatic meters came on board and so the automatic meters...
Is there a date for that? We could get you the exact date when they were implemented here in Golden Beach.
It's been over two years now.
In all candor, it seems to be when the new management company, because that's when everything started, but I want to suggest that the antennas that you're planning on putting up, I'm registered and I can look at my daily usage and what shocks me a bit is that sometimes Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, it shows almost no usage and then Thursday, it goes up to a ridiculous number. So I imagine it's averaging. Either that or something is very wrong because you would think for three days that I wasn't even living in the house.
It's just the signal, that it does not transmit the signal and we do not capture the signal. So the new antennas will actually capture all of the signals.
So but they're not accurate, then how do we know?
Hold on, hold on, let's be fair. Again, you guys know that I try to be fair on everything. That doesn't mean that the meter isn't capturing the right information. What it means is the meter isn't transmitting the information so you can't see it. So when it finally, it's like your cell phone, like if you send an email and you don't have coverage, the email kind of stays in sent mode and then you get somewhere, you send it and the telephone company calls and says, "Why did you send me that email? It was two days ago." And you're like, "Oh, I just got coverage," right? So the data, when it gets transmitted, should be accurate data, it's just transmitted late. That's, 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 hold on. But that hasn't been the case in all of the situations. In some of the situations, our residents have hired third-party testers and there have been issues with the actual meter, two different issues. So data being sent late is one issue. You can still trust the data even though it's late and then data not being correct, that's another issue. And the data not being correct is the one that we're having the most problems with because we're getting, with all due respect, we're getting pushed back that the data is not fact, that the data is correct and we know for a fact because of a third-party lab that it's not correct. And so we're trying to get to the bottom of that.
So just to carry out, so then if there's inconsistent transmittal of the information by the antennas, at the end of every month, is someone actually physically checking them for the bill?
Yes, yes. But now make sure that the transmittal, it may not necessarily be read every day or every hour, but it does capture periodically.
So what he's asking is he has a good question. The bill's not off the transmittal, the bill's off the actual physical inspection of the reading, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just so I know where the relevance is, what, do you know what the average household bill among this? Just average.
It depends, in Golden Beach, we would have to get that information to your manager.
I'm sure it's all, all over the...
Yeah, I know. I just want to know what an average...
What we could do is...
Is it $1,000 a month or is it $100 a month?
Here's what we could do. We could do, Michael, we could do it based on square footage. So what is a 7,000 square foot average and we'll publicize that in the newsletter and so we'll do like an indicative, we'll do like a small house, medium house, and a large house and household.
But the problem with that, the problem with that is some small house might have 10 people living in it.
I would say and households, and households, and households, and households. But we'll do some, we'll give you some like, what do we call them in the newsletter? Did you know?
Photographs.
We'll do that. We could do that.
Go on.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, fellow neighbors. City of North Miami Beach, you know, I'm sort of, I've lived in this town since 1981 and it is only, this is the first time I've ever actually had any issues that I really wanted to address with regarding to the water consumption and the water bill. I'd like to make a few responses to your presentation. It sounds great, but the truth and the reality is that for the last seven months, after multiple multiple phone calls to the city of North Miami Beach, finally today, and I suspect this is because of Michael and because of Judy, my meter was removed for further inspection. I wanted to show the crowd here, if you can see on the screen, this is a bar graph of your website where you can see, this was my average consumption in the bar graph until February of this year and then you just see how it skyrockets. There's two people living in our house. We have a synthetic grass lawn in the back. Nothing has changed. We have made multiple efforts to speak to the city and just to your point of how you are so receptive, we haven't been called back on multiple occasions, nobody knows what we're talking about and when you actually do finally get to the issue, it is obviously a very hot potato with the city of North Miami Beach. There is no question, you get the feeling this is a problem that nobody wants to touch and passes it on. And truthfully, it's been an extremely aggravating scenario where we've actually had three plumbers and a quote-unquote leak specialist and everybody's shaking heads because the city of North Miami Beach has refused to accept that there's any problem and said, "Get a plumber, get another plumber, get a leak specialist to come over to your house." And we've done that, excuse me, other than maybe one or two minor leakages, you know, throwing something which, you know, we're not relevant. There's been nothing to explain the huge volume of water being utilized. When we've returned that information to the city of North Miami Beach, we've actually got, well, that's, it is what it is. And we finally got someone over to the house to look at our meter, I think a month ago, looked at our meter and walked away and didn't call us back. And that's when Michael will recognize, I think, maybe Joanne spoke to you, but we went through Maria and we basically went through Judy. We've got a real issue where our bills have gone from $300 a month to $1,400 a month. Now, for two people to be spending a bill of $1,400 a month, this kind of system where we're supposed to be notified when there's something irregular, not only are we not being notified, we can't even get back to the city to get a legitimate response for something that's obviously wrong. I mean, there's no ways that, we've got floods in our front or our back. And so the bottom line is I can beat a dead horse, this is me speaking individually, but I think Alex has really hit maybe the biggest issue here. You've got a Wi-Fi system that's not working properly and you're kind of recognizing it that I believe just like my Wi-Fi in my office doesn't work and my computer goes down, this is a completely unreliable, erroneous system that has charged us a fortune of money for water we haven't utilized. I think it needs to be recognized. I think it needs to be corrected and I think we need to be rebated towards an average water bill that we have paid and I have paid for 40 years without an issue and suddenly I've got this completely new bill coincidentally when the management changed and when the ability to, the capabilities of reading the meter changed. So come on, we have to be realistic and there's a problem that needs to be corrected. So I'm happy to go through this in granular.
Dr. Nellis, thank you because he's really hit the nail right on the head in terms of some of the issues that we've been seeing and we have other residents who's been even more dire. One of the things...
Worse than that?
Yes.
Thanks.
A lot worse than that.
How wide is this? Michael, how wide is this?
17 homes, right?
It must be about 20 people.
Is there any...
So one of the things, there's a new manager in North Miami Beach, he's been there seven months now, eight months, Mr. Scott, Edmond Scott. He's committed to finding a win-win resolution to these matters. That's why they're here tonight. The team has been very proactive. They've been working with Michael. They have been responsive. We have been serving as a conduit between both parties, not that we're a party two because some of our residents have asked us to be a party two. We're not a party two, we're a facilitator, kind of like a divorce mediator, right? So we're helping with those issues.
Good analogy.
Well, I feel like I'm paying Alamo.
But one of the things that we finally started to get a little bit of traction on is this trust issue with these new eight automatic meters, right? Because yes, it was when the new company came in, but the new company is the one that kind of finally decided to put all the automatic readers in and believe it or not, automatic readers are better for you than the old meters. I know that that sounds weird, but it really is. But we have a trust issue with the automatic meters because we know that one of them at least has been tested and there was, it was not functioning properly. So at least the manager has committed to me that when there is, when there is a true in-doubt meter that's questionable, they're willing to replace it and send it to the lab for testing and keep the replacement meter. So we have seen a little bit of traction on that. Where we haven't seen traction is the credits and there's a lot of reasons behind the credits. A lot of it has to do with the way the state law changed as it relates to water credits. Now, when there's flat-out fraud or flat-out of meter not working, there's a lot of flexibility there. We haven't seen a lot of that yet. A lot of times when we have our residents' homes inspected, at the end of the day, there's an issue that's found and I would say 90% of the cases that we've been working, there has been an issue found that the resident hasn't been able to find on their own. And the 10% that there hasn't, we're still deciding what's going on with those cases. But if you have a water bill-related issue, work with Michael Glidden and his team. Once we get the two antennas up and running, we're going to see a lot better reading and your apps will be more available to you. And I encourage all of our residents to at least sign one person in the house up to the notifications because the meter will alert you. So if your child is taking a long shower, too long of a shower, it will alert you, "Hey, something's running in the house." That's how smart these meters are. So definitely sign up for that.
Alex, with all due respect and I appreciate that this is not the city slot, so I appreciate that we've been given the opportunity to speak to the North Miami Beach. But you know, you sound like their defense attorney because the truth of the matter is that there really is an issue. I mean, we wouldn't have all these people here wasting their time if there wasn't an issue. And if I've gone through the expense of three plumbers and leak experts to really look at my house, then I think fairly, the city of North Miami Beach needs to acknowledge there's an issue and you know, quite honestly, giving me, I mean, I'm out of pocket now probably more than $5,000 between the water bills for the last seven months and what I've paid to re-look at my house again and again. I've done everything possible. The city needs to recognize, and they need to stand here and really recognize before we move on to this presentation that we have a problem that, that's affecting everybody, we've got an unreliable system. And maybe we do need to get a credit, but certainly, if I can't get my money back going forward, I wanna have some reassurance that the system really works. You cannot put a new system in, it's like me putting an artificial valve that I haven't tested. They cannot put something into our properties and use that to charge us without being one hundred and ten percent certain that there is nothing incorrect. Cause we never had this conversation before, it is only now with this new system that we're here talking. So I think that the thrust of this is to really evaluate the, the capabilities of this new system. It may be picking up the right numbers, but it's not transmitting them. And ultimately, then we can go to this new technology. But right now, we're all being basically here in the same boat. And I, and I'm not really hearing anything, and it's not directed against the city. I'm not hearing anything from North Miami. That you know what, I hear you, we're gonna do something about it, which is really what I'm asking. Cause I haven't got that satisfaction and I've tried myself.
Mayor, Commissioners, Mayor, one of the things that, uh, our objective, as your manager mentioned, was a direct order from our city manager. Be there at your next commission, offer your phone numbers, bring your laptops, answer any question that the residents might have, the customers. We could actually resolve any issues that you have. We have the capabilities to look at your accounts, your consumption, uh, any issues that you have. If you have an open work order, open complaint, open question, we're here, we brought our personnel.
Well, you know what the residents are asking is that when they do call, someone does give them an intelligent answer or respond to their calls. Cause Dr. Gallo said he's called several times, no one gets back to him, that's frustrating for anybody. I mean, you guys should give the residents the courtesy of, I, I know, cause I know I've gone through it before. You should g- give them the courtesy of calling them back and saying, hey, look, we don't know what the problem is. Or we'll send someone out there, look, but just not to return their calls and they get frustrated like the residents or it's, it's not right.
But that's really what I've been told from the plumbers now, and I've had three plumbers.
What'd you say?
Go get a plumber, it's on our phone.
Yeah, but they took, they took your meter out.
Today.
Today.
Is that telling you that your meter, there's something wrong with your meter?
That or the wifi, I don't know.
Well, the wifi's not doing the billing, the wifi's just giving you updates, they're doing physical.
I'm gonna ask a question, are you saying that people maybe build more now because the old meters weren't accurately telling what water was being used?
They're not gonna admit that.
Well, what we have noticed in the past is that old copper mechanical meters Yes. do not register as accurate as the new meters, new sensors, electronic meters, that's a fact, that everybody knows.
This is just worth knowing.
What we're here to do is to, uh, put a face to the problem.
To this moment, my meters are suggesting that I've used five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven gallons of water. I mean, it's.
From when to when?
From when to when? I mean, it's beyond bizarre.
We, we understand that, so, I mean, do you hear what they're saying though? The problem is to decide, you're not getting back to the residents when there's an issue. You guys just seem like you're ignoring it, that's not, that's not right, and the residents, that's why they're so upset.
Well, Mayor, not, not to.
I called, I was promised there's. There used to be one woman there, she was the gatekeeper. You spoke to her and you didn't get past that girl. She used to say, well, this is what I'm gonna do for your bill. You know, that, that was it, you got to that one stage, boom.
Unfortunately, the law changed, um, to, to everyone's, um, not, not like. But what we are now here doing is putting a face to, to the, to the issue. And we did have some personal, uh, changes that we made for that same reason and, 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 and it's, uh, it's a fact, when something's not working, you have to fix it.
So you're gonna be here the rest, you're gonna set up outside so people can talk to you?
Yes, we are, we are here set outside and we have cars. We have been, um, obtained an excellent line of communication with your, with your staff. And through that line of communication, we've been able to keep track of every complaint, every issue. So we're keeping a, a good log of statuses or every single call that we receive from Golden Beach.
Let me just add. Dr. Gallo's, uh, question though.
Yes.
Let's say, I mean, it seems too coincidental that all of a sudden the meter switched and his, his meter goes up so dramatically. If once, it sounds like the, the changes are about to be made, and once the changes are made, if it's determined that a meter was bad, will we get a credit back for that?
What, what we do is when we remove a meter for questioning, for testing, we handle it, proper handling, we send it to an independent laboratory. They test the accuracy of that water meter and we obtain the result.
Does the resident get the results of that re- independent?
Yes, they will, they will, and, and that is protocol. And if it hasn't in the past, that was not the proper.
The question is, if, if the meter does not work, what happens?
Still provided.
No, no, but is there a credit issued then?
At that point, we are able to, to give credits. At that point, we are able to justify why, um, a credit is, is, uh, more than, more than required.
So you're gonna be out, you're gonna be available?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so why don't you guys set up out there? I'm sorry, you have a question, I'm sorry, go on.
Well, I have, I have a couple of things, so, uh, first thing is.
You gotta go up there, otherwise people can't hear you at home.
First thing is, um, three two two South Parkway, I just bought in January. I believe in February, after I bought, uh, I had a two thousand dollar bill.
Only?
I, the first bill was like four hundred, the next one was two thousand. So I called North Miami Beach Customer Service, they could absolutely care less to help you. I was practically begging the person on the phone, he said, send us an email. I said, when will you read the email? He said, well, it's a, one large email, all of your emails go there, and when we get to it, we get to it. I found no other recourse and I wrote all you guys an email and said, what the heck is going on? This is crazy. And then Alex, I think hooked me up with Mr. Glidden, who then got me with the right people. We got out, uh, figured out that I had a leak, fixed the problem, they credited me with the sewer. Um, but the customer service is absolutely horrible. And if I didn't go through Golden Beach, I would have.
That's why Michael's here, so we're trying to.
The, the other issue is, um, I'm a commercial contractor and I've seen this issue before. Um, with new-built structures and whatnot. Now, I don't know if the city would agree to it, but what I would do if I'm in your case, is you got two options, you can go on vacation for a month and keep everything shut off and see what your bill is. Or be, after the meter, put your own meter, a sub-meter off of your main. So it's gonna go through your meter and then it's gonna go through your meter. Then at the end of the month, or whenever the cycle is, you can look at both numbers and see if they match. So that's an idea that you can do too, to really figure out. Because if you're, if you have no recourse, me as the city, that's what I would do myself. I'd say, okay, this meter's not working, we could send it to a lab or we could just put another one behind it and it can all go through and we could see what happens.
I appreciate you saying it was.
In your spare time.
But to the first point, I mean, to the first point, I was actually, we were away for some, for a couple of months, basically, where there was nobody in our house. And we still had the, we actually could tell by virtue of the, you know, the leader of being online, that at three o'clock in the morning and at seven o'clock, we're starting to have this huge volume of water being counted against the usage of the house. And, and there was just nothing there.
Bizarre.
Dr. Rube, you have something, so we wanna keep moving on.
Uh, be very briefly, I'm Dr. Benny Rube. I had a different experience, it's been for a long time that I had water problems, high bills, the manager here knows. The city has come and been receptive to me, I mean, they have come to my house, they even changed one of the, um, meters. But I still have the problem, the past two months, I got credit, I don't know why I got credit. Uh, it was like hundreds of dollars, but not thousands of dollars, but my bill has been. My bill has been around two ninety, two eighty every month. And I don't have a leak inside my house. So, you know, and I had already three people come in, experts, and they have come in, they have looked at it, we have closed all the valves. And we still have this huge problem of, of water. So, uh, I, I wish that, you know, somehow or another, you can orient us to give us better ideas where the problem is. Because it's not just, you know, myself, but it's the whole city of Golden Beach that we have a problem.
Okay, so they're gonna set up outside, so you meet with them outside. Uh, anyone else have any questions or anything?
I just, I, thank you very much for coming, thank you for addressing, I'm sure, uh, it's not easy sitting where you guys are. But going forward, um, not just today when you guys are here and receptive, I guess going forward, when we have these type of problems, is this just, we're gonna have to, everyone's gonna have to go back to Michael to, to be able to get service with you guys, or what is the recommendation, or what is the plan going forward?
Well, it's your, it's your, as a customer, you're able to, as a Golden Beach customer, not many cities have the ability to have such a great staff. Um, they do a fantastic job, um, from a.
Well, he's asking, do we go through you?
You can come through us directly or you could go through Michael, it's up to you, whoever you as the customer would like to do.
We, we always encourage our residents to first go directly to North Miami Beach so that our staff can focus on other town-related business. But when you feel that you've hit a, a wall or no one's calling you back, then immediately let us know. Cause what we don't want is unsatisfied residents.
Mr. Manager, I think this is a town issue, not just an individual issue. Once I get it resolved, maybe we can do that, but at least we need your help to resolve this problem. Because we all been trying, I mean, everybody's here, so we need your help, it's a real town issue.
Absolutely, and, and that's why undoubtedly we are, we have, we have meetings set up with the, with the manager there. We believe it's a meter issue. So we're, we're fighting it on a meter angle issue in terms of testing, in terms, in terms of certifying. And we'll continue to do so. There are other changes that we thought were important for the community to know what those changes were, because it affects your bottom line. And we'll continue to lead on the effort and Michael will still be the lead on the effort. And hopefully, there will come a time where we all feel confident enough in the system that we can rely on just North Miami Beach independently, but until that time, we'll continue to be the leader on it.
Can I, uh, say a few things? Just for clarification, the, uh, customers you mentioned earlier are retail customers. Aventor, Miami Gardens, uh, yourselves, Sunny Isles, and a portion of Unincorporated, uh.
Which is the wholesale?
Wholesale is, uh, we've got Battle Harbor, Hallandale, I wrote it down, Opa Laca, and another small portion.
Alright, so we'll, we'll change the record to reflect that. So the wholesale customers are the list that you just gave, and the retail customers are the ones that I gave.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Real, real quickly, you said there were these nineteen submerged, uh, meters.
So yes.
Were they being affected by being submerged?
No.
No, so.
Are you gonna notify the people who have these submerged meters?
So, so, so just so we're clear, on the, on the meters that Dave's identified that are submerged, we're working together. The town's gonna take on that responsibility to, to address raising them, so the residents aren't burdened by that. Because there's a financial implication of raising the boxes and everything else, we're taking that on.
So that's it, antennas, we'll be able to communicate?
No, it's just, so we find it from, we're doing it from a public health perspective. So whenever you have a meter that's underwater, that means that there's ponding of water. And so for mosquitoes being born and frogs and everything else. So we're addressing it from a public safety health perspective. So we're working with our, with three contractors that get prices to raise those boxes. North Miami Beach is providing us with all the materials needed to do so. So it's a partnership between the two cities, and we don't wanna pay, pay, place that burden on our residents, we're taking on that burden ourselves.
So I encourage you, if some of you are here for the water issues, I'm gonna have them, uh, out, set up out there. I will meet with them and give them your address and tell them the issues. So if you guys, thank you again for coming.
Iguanas.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You can set up out there, and, uh, Michael, if you could set them up out there.
They're, they're set up in my office so that, so we don't have the noise carrying in the hallway. But, uh, if you have a water-related issue.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Uh, they'll be right outside, we have another presentation on iguanas.
Iguanas, yes.
The people who are leaving, if you wanna hear about iguanas, they're coming up now. And that will be a brief presentation on iguanas.
All right, um, to make it brief, my email is tom@iguancotrol.com. I G U A N A. I'll, uh, take some quick questions as we go along throughout the quick, quick, quick presentation. And, and, uh, tell them about what we do. So, um, I'm gonna flip through these slides very quickly, but as a question comes up, just ask me a question about service, the iguanas themselves, and what you can do yourself on your own property to help mitigate the problem. All right, so as long as we all know, cute little guys. All right, so, um, I don't worry about this physical, about the iguana, the third eye on top of the head, only for predators. Again, as we go along, any questions, just pop your hand up. They are not nocturnal. So when you wake up and you see defecation by your pool, test again the next day. Typically, if defecation comes at night, it's probably another animal. I talk in the statistical term of a bell-shaped curve, meaning I toss away the top two percent, bottom two percent, and I deal with the majority. So there may be exceptions to every rule. But in this case, typically iguanas are not nocturnal. So if the droppings or, or damage or, or what it may be by your pool comes during daytime hours, then it may be an iguana. They have poor eyes at night. Uh, um, their teeth are designed for cutting plants, they are not, uh, aggressive creatures. They are herbivores, like Bambi the deer will run from you. Um, they don't come toward you because they're not designed, they look ominous. They seem to have large claws, there's no muscle behind the claw. If you held a raccoon in your hand or your arm, it wanted to get away, it can rip your flesh. An iguana can give you scratches at most. A raccoon can gnaw your finger off, it's designed to eat meat, to, to hunt for its, its, its food. An iguana is not, so it may cut your skin. Again, it's not an aggressive creature, it is designed just to, uh, 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 consume plants. All right, this is a simple picture for iguanas, uh, herbivore. So hibiscus, buglevilla, uh, one-on-one on plants. Um, most lawn, lawn, lawn care landscaping companies should know about the one-on-one of what iguanas eat. Most homeowners do. The, the, the quick test is if there's some particular plant you want to put on your property, go to Home Depot, buy a small sample, a couple of samples, put it by the seawall and wait a month. If they don't go after it, as they keep parading by it, you should be safe. That's the quick of it. The website, iguancotrol.com has a very short list of plants they don't eat. No one has yet really to design a full list encompassing all what they do and don't eat. But that's the same advice I give to homeowners, I give it to Brightview, the country's largest landscaping company.
Quick question.
Yes.
When you see an iguana like that big, how old is that iguana usually?
They can be up to fifteen years old, so it probably is twelve, fourteen, fifteen years old.
That, that's a fifteen-year-old iguana?
Yes.
And so when you have a freeze or whatever, like five years ago, I thought.
Ten years ago, yes.
Freeze is, they kinda, do they all die?
Flooding freezes, when you get to a temperature of about forty.
Yes.
Forty-one, forty-two, forty-three overnight, but the next day it goes to sixty-five, does no harm. Uh, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we had a winter where it stayed at about forty, forty-two, what have you, at night and at day for about twelve days. That will do a nice reduction in, in the population if you want. Since then, we've had evenings in the wintertime of about forty degrees, but the next day it goes to sixty-five and, and doesn't dent at all. All right, um, uh, uh, again, more, more about, uh, their diet, just, uh, quickly. It's just about how they, they consume. So their effect on the econo- on the, uh, 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 system that we have is not only will they affect the, the foliage, the budget that we put out for planting, but even when it comes to, to plants and insects, uh, uh, animals and insects, they will affect locally, for example, the Miami blue butterfly, where they, they don't go after protein, they don't consume uh, uh, bugs or lizards. Although, over the years, FWC had dissected iguanas and find some forms of protein. But protein is listed as insects, lizards and what have you. Since they are herbivores and they consume plants all day long, it's my opinion that as it goes along, they catch some slow lizard and there you go. But otherwise, they do not consume protein, it's all, all about plants. So in the, in the Miami blue butterfly, what they would do is they go after the nicarabean plant, a plant they love. The Miami blue butterfly lays her larvae only on this plant. So as they consume the plant, they consume the larvae. So that was an issue down in Key West that we had to deal with. Colors you know about, they're, they're absolutely amazing how they can hide. Pick a, pick a cloudy day, you have forty iguanas on your property during the daytime, you cannot find one on a cloudy day. Absolutely amazing how they can hide. Smaller ones are still, they're, in, in the wild, there are plenty of iguanas that are preyed upon. Crocs, gators, fox, coyote, large snakes, large birds of prey, and on and on. In domesticated areas, we don't have these in any great number, enough to, to curtail iguana population. So as they grow, they just, they just begin to overrun an area very easily, very quickly. Phenomenal swimmers. They don't need to have water, they can live in dry, arid climate. But they've learned to use the water system that we have, the canals, as migration. So that's why near water, we have a higher population, and they go more inland as they overpopulate the water areas. From Central and South America, back in the, no one knows exactly, but late seventies, early eighties, bought them by the thousands, they were great pets, it was a fad. Put the little iguana into a little glass cage like we did the snakes. No one realized that the three, four-inch iguana grew to be five feet long. And much like a bird, you cannot train an iguana where you defecate. So this five-foot-long lizard's walking around your house, it made sense, I'll put Junior out back. This is his climate, I'll put some grapes, some lettuce, whatever it may be. And it was kinda cool, because like a cat, you would stay nearby, you see him up in the tree. You see him up in the tree, and you feed him. He met her next door, and that's it. So now they are part of our tapestry. Nothing we can do to eradicate the iguana. Ants, rats, roaches, iguanas, all pests, all here to stay. The most we do is control ants, rats, roaches, or iguanas. They're not very aggressive creatures. They may fight amongst each other, but they really don't do much harm to each other. Again, they're not designed to tear and rip at flesh or what have you, but they are territorial. Love temperatures from seventy-five to ninety-five. On cloudy days, you don't see iguanas because they need the UVB rays of the sun to create the D3 so they can consume phosphorus and other elements within their body and be healthy. Without the sun, without the UVB rays of the sun, they cannot digest their food as they need to. They can, people have made comments like, oh, well, I fed the iguana a hot dog. It will eat almost anything you give it. But over time, it becomes a health threat to it, a health risk. It is an herbivore. It needs the sunlight to digest and become a healthy animal. That's why during the rainy days that we see, they seem to have disappeared, they're still around. Whatever body count you have in July, whatever number of iguanas you have in July, you have in January, February, and March. Iguanas go through a state called brumation. Everyone knows about hibernation in a bear. They actually are unconscious for a certain period of time. Brumation is where reptile goes through a state that they are somewhat lethargic. It's like you and I being drugged. They're kind of aware, they can move about, but they're very sluggish. January, February, March, where it's cooler, they react through the state, they go through this brumation state. The twenty you had in July, you have in February. But in July, all twenty come out. High temperature, high metabolism, they're out every day foraging. In February, low temperature, low metabolism, and only two come out. So they haven't disappeared, they're just around. They hide very well. They are herbivores, they will run, the tail does detach.
How do you kill them?
Florida Wildlife Commission is the agency within the state with such guidelines of how you handle every animal, nurturing, caring, and euthanization. FWC sets guidelines, each city, municipality, through the commissioners, must decide whether to set a separate guideline to not abide by that. FWC set a guideline years ago where you can use a high-power, defined as a pellet that travels at about a thousand feet a second, a high-power pellet device, pistol or rifle, to dispatch an iguana. You are required to do a one-shot, one-kill. Each city can vote to override that and say, no, we will not allow any such tools, device. Coral Springs is one, for example, that does not allow the dispatch of any.
When you say one-shot, one-kill, it can't be a repeater-type of gun?
There is no repeater type in the compressed pellet. There is, well, there are some manufactured on the market. I am testing them, but to a real effect that you can use them, they jam too often. In a firearm, the kinetic energy that's created from the explosion is such that it can cause the metal to pull back, throw out the cartridge, and reload. When it comes to compressed air pistols, the kinetic energy is much less. So instead of a discharge of a charge, it's a revolution of a cart.
Let me help summarize where we are. So in Golden Beach, as it relates to iguanas and iguana control, your ordinance requires that you take care of all pests and nuisances on your property.
Yes.
You're responsible one thousand percent for rats, raccoons, possums, iguanas, feral cats, any wild animal on your property. Couple of years ago, because the iguana population in our common areas, bridges, parks, roads, mostly in our parks and in some of our bridges, were getting a little bit out of control. We contracted with Iguana Control Services, and we started to offer select areas that we saw a high population of iguanas. We would go into your house and try to help you service those areas to try to reduce the number of iguanas or population in a certain area. And through the years, our residents have become dependent on the town providing that service to your individual home. Last year, the iguana population in Florida became very out of control, and there was a lot of misinformation that was put out into the public by the Fish and Wildlife Commission. They basically said, go out and kill everything that you see, and then they retracted that, right? So our goal tonight is to do twofolds. One, let you know that legally you're allowed to take whatever action you need to reduce the population of iguanas on your property. Two, know that the town identify, we're responsible for the town's common areas, but you're responsible for any nuisances of population control on your own property. We will assist you with that when we feel that it's becoming too burdensome on the neighboring areas. But the bonus is on you to manage your iguana control, your iguana population on your property. Iguana Control is the firm that we use to provide us with the service of our common areas and elements. And sometimes, when we see that there's a geographical location, like if we get calls from three homes in one area that they're having a big iguana issue, we will send Iguana Control into that area to help reduce the population size, and then it's more manageable for you, the residents. But we do not, if we just get one call from one house and none of the neighbors call, we aren't providing an individual white-glove service to the home because that, the code requires that you take care of that issue on your own. And so we wanted you to understand what the issue is. Am I missing something in terms of our service or program?
It also, you also go into issues of private property. So because some homeowners, although they may have a problem, may not care for this particular process. So what I do, and we handle several municipalities, the most common process this takes is this. The municipal, the city will hire us to come in and do the common public areas. And then we offer a substantial discount to homeowners if they want to come onto the property and do this on an annual program.
Excellent. Any questions about iguanas or iguana control?
I see.
Yes.
So I appreciate that, and I learned a lot about them. I learned that they are not culpable to my water bill, not to water.
They like water.
Seriously, we have two houses that are basically one house apart. One of those houses happens to be, I think it's one eighty-one, the Duffna property, which is effectively in a abandoned, derelict house at the moment with a derelict backyard. And despite the fact that we really, yeah, would like to do something, the reality is, we can do something on property that, not our own property. And we have seen on multiple occasions, a number of animals, iguanas in particular, like rats and cats on this other property. So I mean, I'm assuming that there's a way in which the city can help us in that particular.
Absolutely, and so Michael, we'll meet with the two of you afterwards. So in our code, I do have authority, the manager has authority. If there is a property that isn't being responsible to the nuisance issues related to pests, there's action that we can take on your behalf to safeguard that. And so now that you've identified it, we will take that necessary action to put that homeowner on notice that if they don't obey it themselves, we will go on and invade it on our own.
So just sorry, please, I'm sorry. But do these iguanas migrate from property, you know, they go up and down the beach or.
In the wild, they have up to almost a mile radius of territory. But in domesticated areas, it's more like a sixteenth, meaning a few blocks. So they may be one who might travel about. The two things, the two characteristics about iguanas that allow my business to exist is the fact that they are territorial. They come back to the same tree, the same hole practically. And that they're habitual, meaning that people who have an issue with iguanas by the pool can tell me, oh, they come by one o'clock every afternoon by my pool and defecate. So those two factors allow us to do what we do and be effective at that.
Is it typical, I see so many on my roof.
Yeah, so that means you have, the Spanish tile roof that we have creates a cavity between the roof, really, there's a subroof. This is a cosmetic surface and protects the subroof, the real roof.
Oh, they're going in the roof?
No, no, what happens is that cavity that's created from the Spanish barrel tile and the subroof, you know, it's sometimes about that large, allows and depends upon how that Spanish tile is placed on the roof. Because there are different ways, I'm not a contractor, but sometimes it's a label lower. It may allow more space, they can live within that Spanish tile on your roof. They're not coming into your attic, but they can live within that crawl space. If a tile's broken and they move it down, now you have this long tunnel of Spanish tile roofs. And they go within that tunnel.
I can see them.
Alright, I want to keep the meeting moving because we've got a lot to do. Anyone else, you have a question, I'm sorry?
My question is, if I do something about it in my house, and I pay this guy, and they go running around the town, it's not really going to work, it's looking to be in my house.
Ants, rats, and roaches. If you're next to a home, which apparently you are, that is abandoned, it has a rat problem, you will put out rat traps, knowing that in a sense, they belong to the abandoned home. But you will do something so you don't have the problem.
But as it relates to this particular property, let us look into it because it sounds like there's maybe a common denominator, and we could help with that.
I'm sorry, go on.
Oh, are we legally allowed in Golden Beach to shoot these?
Yes.
You are allowed to use a high-power pellet, pistol or rifle.
Yes. So the town does not have any, the town does not have any organs outside of what the state minimums are. So you have to follow what the state law is, but we do not govern additional requirements. With the exception of, it's your responsibility to take care of the issue.
Anyone else have a question, I want to keep moving. Okay, thanks, guys.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Sorry. If you have independent iguana questions in the lobby after the meeting.
Can you leave us some of your business cards?
Yeah, Michael, Alex, Michael put the contact information.
It's been in the website, in the newsletter?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, guys, I want to keep moving on, we've got a lot to go over tonight. Next on the agenda is motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal of items from the consent agenda, or changes to the agenda. I have none. Counsel? Staff?
Yeah, there's a scribbler's error on the finance item. I left the number from the previous Excel sheet. It does not affect the recommendation of the item. But Ms. Camacho is going to pass that out, so just let the record reflect that the attachment spreadsheet has a scribbler's error that we're fixing. And.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Moving on to good and welfare, anyone here for good and welfare?
Yes.
Dr. Benin Lu, six ninety in North Island, how are you? I'm concerned about the road, if it's going to be fixed before the run in the Sunday because I'm, as a doctor, if we run in this type of, we're going to get a lot of injuries.
So the five, so great news, the five K has an amazing new route, and it has, it will be the new route for imper附ity. The five K will start out of the Beach Pavilion this Sunday at early in the morning, and it's going to be looping around Ocean Boulevard on the interior lanes. It's actually a lot nicer, safer. You're going to be extremely ecstatic about it, but it's going to be on Ocean this year. And it will be on Ocean every year moving forward because the new route that we've.
What time does it start? In a call.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Oh, seven thirty.
The whole one is on Ocean Boulevard, so we're closing.
Do we pick up our shirts?
One side.
Everything will be at the Beach Pavilion.
The day of the run.
I believe so, yes.
Number two, we're still in rainy season, and a lot of houses have a lot of water that is still flooding.
We're going to address that tonight.
You addressed it?
Yes, we will. Okay, we're going to address it. Went during his report.
He's talking about mosquitoes. So we.
Yes, because of Zeta and all the other bugs.
We have, we have increased our number of aerosprays and localized treatment with Clark mosquito we authorized last week. So they're working on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys.
Rocky! Any other good and welfare?
Yes, I have several letters to be read for the record. The first one is from Alfred and Sidell Herrick, six twenty-five Ocean Boulevard. It reads, "Our sand at six twenty-five Ocean Boulevard, Golden Beach, is gone. The ocean water is almost up to our brick wall. Please do whatever is necessary to restore our beach with sand. One time, you did restore our beach in the thirty-three years that we are living here. Do you think you can do it once again for us? Alex, we really do need the beach nourishment. Please help us get our beach back. Please find a way. Thank you sincerely, Alfred and Sidell Herrick, six twenty-five Ocean Boulevard, Golden Beach, Florida, three three one six zero." The next letter is from Leon Hubert, four forty Golden Beach Drive. "I would like to propose that a bicycle rack be placed in the southern part of town near the tennis courts or town hall. It would be environmentally friendly and would allow our bicycles to be locked. Sincerely, Leon Hubert, M.D. four four zero, Golden Beach Drive." Deana Nicolella, sorry, I don't have her address. "Please chair this project for community center. Dear Town of Golden Beach, I please ask that you table the vote for funding for the community center and recreation center. We, as a community, would like to have more time and knowledge of how this financial instrument is going to be structured and the costs of running these new amenities. Sincerely, Deana Nicolella." And the last letter from Ronnie Bianco, four four eight Golden Beach Drive. "Dear all, I sincerely apologize for the late email, but it has just come to my attention that the funding for the town hall is to be approved tonight. This is a very important issue for the town, and it seems to me that few in town realize that the project has gone this far and has an understanding of its scope. For example, is it a four million or five-point-two million dollar project? This project also raises serious questions about the operating cost of having two town buildings, the viability of a plate court, the need for a staffed gym, etc. I am aware that I am late to realize the issue and apologize for any inconvenience, but urge you to table the issue and publicize a meeting just on this topic in the next few weeks. Just to be clear, we are not opposed to building a new town hall and understand the need, but the scope of what is to be done is a serious topic that deserves more community attention. Again, my apologies, thank you for your consideration. Ronnie Bianco, four four eight Golden Beach Drive."
That's it?
That's it.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay, moving right along, mayor's report, a few quick items. Street resurfacing, I know it's taken longer than expected. The town manager is going to go over the new schedule, but we delayed it mainly because of the weather, it was raining, then the Jewish holidays, and then with the sea rise and the issues of the flooding. So just be a little patient. Once it's completed, it's going to look a lot nicer. And I know it's an inconvenience for a lot of people, but sometimes, you know, we've got to take a step forward, a step backwards before we go forward. The Halloween event is Thursday, the thirty-first. Town manager is going to go over, there might be some changes to the location, but I'll let the town manager go over that. But I look forward to it. Hopefully, I see all the residents attend. In my opinion, it's the town's best event. So I'm looking forward to it. I know Michael's been working really hard, putting it together, and pretty excited about it. I'm pleased how the new civic center is progressing. I appreciate everyone's input and suggestions. We've implemented a lot of them and looking forward to the progression of the town hall. The flooding situation, we are aware of it. We're going to address it tonight in the manager's report. Tides are the highest that we've ever seen. I've been living here for over twenty years, and the water is the highest level I've ever seen in twenty years plus on my sea level. Thank God it's not going over my seawall, but I know a lot of people, it is progressing over your seawall, which has never happened before. But apparently, you know, it's a full moon, the moon's the closest to the earth that it's been in, I don't know how many years. But also, what's making it worse is the wind is coming out of the northeast. So when the wind's coming out of the northeast, it's blowing the water, and that's causing, A, beach erosion, which is affecting a lot of the residents, especially on the north side of town. Town manager and I both have gone out there several times, we're aware of the beach erosion. It happens every year. This year, I think it's the worst it's happened in years. But every year, the beach comes back. People just need to be a little patient, and town manager and I are looking at other options also. But that's for the beach erosion, and also with the surge of the water on the intercoastal, with the wind coming out of that direction, it's forcing the water over many seawalls. So we are aware of these issues, we are addressing it. I mean, I'm sure by now, everyone's a believer in sea rise and with the tidal surge. So hopefully, when the moon rotates, apparently further from the sun, which is apparently sometime, I don't know exactly when, but you'll see the tides and the water level of the intercoastal especially go down, and that should alleviate a lot of the flooding. So with that, I'll move on to council comments. I'll start this time on, to my right, Councilman Mendel.
Yeah, just one very quick comment. I know Maria's starting the process, an auditor, well, the audit process for this year. We do need a new auditor this year, I really believe so. We've had the same auditor for the last ten years. Standard practice is usually every four or five years you have to change. Considering we're starting this big project and finances is always going to be an issue, I think at least for this year, we need to find a new one. And I have nothing else. And I have nothing else.
Okay. Councilman Luskin?
I just want to take a few minutes to, uh, comment that I think after living here all these years, we all take for granted some of the things that the town does for residents. A couple of weeks ago, we had the license renewal and a lot of people took advantage of it and it was so convenient and a lot of people need it now because if you travel, you need a star on your license now. So, you know, when I think about it, we do license renewal, we shred, we do bulky waste. We even have public works a few times a year, come and clean the garbage pans, the food trucks, all the events. I just want to say, you know, thank you to, I mean, I have to say, we honestly deserve a pat on the back. I don't know any community that does what we do, so, um...
I know a lot of people appreciate the license.
I mean, I got, I came for the license because I haven't traveled in a while and my, uh, my license, uh, you know, they commented that it needed to be changed and three days later, you know, I read I can come here and do it. It was quick, it was easy, and I just hope our residents realize that, you know, with some of the troubles that we do have, I mean, we make up for it in every other way that we possibly can, so, thank you and kudos to all of us. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Bursey?
Start off with a couple of things. One, great job with the city, Michael, everyone with the order. I mean, it was really impressive how, um, you guys took that on and, um, obviously assisted. Since we last met, I, I was, went over to one of the residence homes on the ocean that had some issues with the beach, um, and watched a lot of their yard collapse into the ocean. And, and talking with them, you know, and realizing over the years, like, just in terms of what taxes each resident's put in and what they get out, I, I just didn't know if there was something that we can do to maybe, um, maybe help give them, like, a lot of them don't know what they can put on their property and there's some uncertainty in terms of if they're able to put sea graves or different things that can help stabilize their area, and I wasn't sure if there, there was maybe something that we should be doing to conduct a study or something in terms of meeting with someone from the state and figuring out what we can put out there and maybe on an emergency basis, given what's happened right now, um, help give people the opportunity to put something out there that will help protect their homes. And I don't necessarily know what the right thing is, but just, I just thought that might be worth the time and money to, um, help stabilize their properties. I thought the idea of a bike rack on the park sounds, makes a lot of sense. I also want to thank the council, um, for permitting me to go through and give my comments last week. I did spend considerable time with Alex, um, on two different occasions. I'm going to let him speak for the most part for him and I'm not going to take too much more time tonight, just because it's already been a long meeting. But I, I want to make everyone aware, I'm not an expert in construction. I don't know construction very well. I gave my experience as developer and my thoughts, um, but I'm not sure which resident came in with a letter, but, um, whoever said that, hey, we don't even have, we haven't even actually put out to the, all the residents how much each of these different projects in A, B, C, and D is going to cost. The fact that we did not, um, have a workshop, I'm not asking for, I wasn't asking for a charrette last time, to be clear. I was just saying, giving the opportunity to have one or two meetings where all the residents could come in and listen, um, I still think that's the right thing. I appreciate everyone giving me the time to give my comments and, and prepare to go forward, but I do think, um, that this council and its residents, the town's residents are better served by having an open item, an open meeting where everybody can discuss and we can get output, we can get input from everyone else before we move on something like this, but I'm prepared to move on, but I just, again, wanted to voice my dissatisfaction with how we handled it, not with Alex, not with any of the staff, not with the people, but just the fact that the first time around when we did the CIP, um, it came up that we went and did a charrette and I thought that didn't make any sense the way it originally happened. But I did think the way when this council, the majority of this council got voted in, um, and how we handled the CIP and how we talked about different things from parks to underwater, undergrounding utilities to sidewalks, we, we took some time and we, we, we got some closure on it and, and it definitely changed from that time, and I think that this town hall project would benefit from the same light. With that said, thank you and, um, we just, thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Einstein?
So, just picking up where Ken left off, you know, I'm new to the council this year, I guess, in, uh, February, and I don't know what took place prior to then, if there were workshops or not concerning town hall, but it does take on a little bit of an issue of, you know, should, and I think there was a part of this where they sent out circulars, maybe, what people in town wanted and they did, uh, you know, they wanted a gym, they wanted this, and they rated what they wanted more and were they willing to pay for it? And the answer was no, they didn't want to pay for it if they had to be assessed for it, and so, you know, the administration and the mayor came up with creative ways of, you know, what will this cost and, you know, if we have forfeiture money, can they be used in place for that? I do agree, I don't want to be shoving this down the town's throats in a way, and I just want to make sure we've taken adequate due process, uh, means to let our citizens, you know, Ken makes a very good point, that I really did not really think about, you know, or do we just say, well, we know that this is a need. We've known it's been a need for a long time, and if we don't do it now, you know, we have monies available and we can get, buy money and then go to the town and find out from them. And are most people in favor of a town hall when it's not going to come directly out of their pocket vis a vis an assessment? I think these are interesting questions, um, in where we're such a small town and you go to the beach and you see your neighbor and they voice these things, you know, it's not like you can go hide and, uh, you know, put your hands in front of your face, so, something to be concerned about. Water bill issue, I think it was addressed. I think a couple of things you got to tell people is that part of that water bill is also town charges, you know, that's...
Only the store water fee.
Yeah.
The water fees that are on there and...
And that's consistent every month.
It's $50 a month that has...
But it did increase.
It's $150 a quarter.
But it did increase.
It increased six years ago.
So, didn't we do, no, no, nothing lately? Okay.
We recommended increases, but the council devoted it down.
That's it?
Finally, uh, I don't know if other people have had these issues with dogs barking at night.
Nope. Yes.
It is just, it is just, uh, I want to say that the police have been extremely responsive. Uh, I don't want to seem like I'm a nuisance.
It's Ken's dog.
No, it's not Ken's dog. I, uh, it's, and it starts a chain reaction.
Oh, yes. Yes, that it does.
There are people, I don't know how many dogs they have in their house. They must have 10, 15.
No one has 15 dogs in their house, Ben. All right? I don't want to get your information, but there's not one resident...
It's Prince and GB at night going to your house and making nuisance.
There's no one that has 15 dogs in Golden Beach, right?
You don't think so?
Yeah. But, all right, is that it? I'm going to cut you short. Well, I just want to make one comment. You know, it's funny, uh, you know, one person, not saying one person, writes a letter saying, you know, concerned about it, but over the last six months, I've probably had more, probably 10 times that amount of people telling me they're looking forward to the progress of the town hall. So, you know, it's funny, sometimes they say squeaky wheel gets the grease. You have to be, take everything in perspective of, you know, someone writing one letter, speaking at good and welfare regarding the process of the town hall. You talk to the majority of residents, in my opinion, okay, who I talk to residents often, they are excited about the town hall and they think we're doing it right, so, uh, and I'm going to let the town manage. When we get to that part of the town hall, I'm, we're going to go over what we did in the past to get to this level and what do we have to go forward and when people will also have some additional, uh, us especially will have some definite, additional input.
And that's the last six months, the last three years.
Yes, people have been saying...
Just one clarification?
Right.
Just one quick, I, I, I strongly support doing the town hall. I, I don't, like, regardless of whether residents right now came back or not, I think in, in walking, in our opinion, newer last six months has not changed. I believe we need to do it. I'm just concerned about the process under which we did it.
We're going to go over it and, and so everyone should feel comfortable with it, because again, once they feel comfortable with it, so, but I, again, I wanted to stress that, you know, I, and I know you do too, and I know Judy does, and I know you do, and I'm sure Ben, you do too, with people with 15 or more dogs, that, uh, you hear from people and, uh, majority of the people, especially going back to the questionnaire, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse, I mean, that was the number one thing on the questionnaire. People wanted to see the progression of the town with the new town hall.
That's where we got the idea from.
Exactly, but we're going to go over that within time. I'm going to turn it over first to the town manager.
My report is not short and it's important that we all pay a little bit of, of attention in terms, because I went, go through some very critical issues that we're facing in town. First, as it relates to the road project. So, the road project is not delayed, um, and it's not the contractor's fault that we are where we are. So, I made the decision to have the roads milled because we were going to lose the milling machine if I delayed the milling and the project would not have been able to commence until after the first of the year. So, I made the decision to mill the road because we can asphalt whenever we want to. The problem is, we can't asphalt when the roads are wet. And even though it's been very dry because it hasn't rained a lot, our streets have been extremely wet. Two issues that we're seeing, we're seeing groundwater intrusions or water literally coming out of the dirt, not over seawalls or through seawalls, but literally coming up through the dirt and onto our streets, and asphalt will not adhere to a wet pavement. So, we have to wait for a clear day for us to asphalt. So, we're taking the necessary precautions to move the 5K. We're going to talk about Halloween in a few minutes, but we are going to have to live with the milled roads until we get some clear days that we can do asphalting. But it's in our best interest to allow us to do the project correctly, so we don't have any issues on a moving forward basis. So, you will be notified the night before when we're going to do the sections in front of your house, and you'll be notified the morning of to move your vehicle. I do not have a time schedule for you because we do not know when the, the flooding is going to stop as it relates to the king moons that we're having, and the mayor mentioned this briefly, but the water that we're seeing all over town are directly attributed to the way the lunar cycle is occurring this month. So, the moon is the closest to Earth that it's been in over 50 years and it will rotate back out, but we're seeing a couple of things that we're concerned about. Halloween Day, October 31st, will be the highest the water is in the intercoastal. They're projecting 3.8 feet of water. Typically it's 2.0 feet of water, so it is additional 1.8 feet of water. So, we're concerned about the amount of water that we're going to see on our streets, so we may have to move Halloween from North Park to the Beach Pavilion. We will make that decision, believe it or not, the day before. So, on the, on the 29th, I'll make the decision if we're going to move Halloween from North Park to the Pavilion. But if North Park is saturated and becomes a mud pit, which it is today, if you walk North Park today, it's very soft, but if there's going to be more water and it's going to be dirtier, that's not a safe environment for people to be walking. It creates too many tripping hazards, which is a liability for the town. So, we may have to relocate the Halloween party to the Beach Pavilion. We will notify you via code red the day of, and we'll start putting on the website and on channel 89, uh, channel 500 and whatever it is now, what is it?
665.
665, to let you know. But that's where the road project is, and that may affect Halloween, because if it is unsafe to get to Halloween, especially because it's very dark, we're going to move it. That's number one. Because of all the water in town, we're starting to see more and more smoking boxes in town. If you see a smoking box, that means a transformer box, know two things. A, hot equipment, cold water creates smoke, that does not mean it's on fire, but please call us when you see smoking boxes in town, call the substation. As it relates to the beach, um, I kid you not, I was sitting in Tampa, looking at a camera where waves were crashing at the steps of our lifeguard stand. We literally had water cresting or, or wave, wave action on our lifeguard stand, so we have lost a lot of our beach. I'll remind our residents that beach re-nourishment is a personal responsibility. So, if you wish to re-nourish your beaches, here's what the town does do for you. We do not charge you permit fees. We help you expedite your permit to the state of Florida and we facilitate how to get the, the sands onto your properties. We've only had, in the 12 years that I've been your manager, we've only had three residents, actually, we've only had three beach re-nourishment projects, two at the same residence. So, residents at the beach need to be cognizant that beach re-nourishment is your issue. If the council decided that it should be a town issue, we now then have to deal with public access issues. And so, beach re-nourishment should always remain an issue that is private. We will help, Councilman Vice Minister Bursey, it's an excellent suggestion, we're going to put together what they call a shoreline stabilization plan, which means what kind of plant material can be added to the shoreline to stabilize, um, the beach from eroding. And I also like to remind our residents that typically the months of December, January, and February, we see some of our sand come back onto our shores. So, the, the normal tidal influences bring sands back to our shores. There are over 33 homes in town that have water coming through their properties onto the town's right of way. We will be issuing warnings and violations to try to correct that action. These are not waters that are coming over seawalls or through seawalls. These are elevations that have not been properly maintained, so if you have not maintained your elevation, groundwater is starting to seep up through your, through your ground and into the town's right of way. Your code requires that no less on an annual basis, you're to check your elevations and bring in material to keep your elevations at the minimum of elevations. In the 12 years that I've been the manager, we have not enforced that ordinance. We will be starting to enforce that ordinance because we're starting to see a lot of ground saturation causing floodings in areas that we've never had flooding, South Parkway, North Island, and in other areas. So, be aware that we're going to start looking at ground saturation as a way to remediate some of the flooding. And we're going to talk about flooding later this evening. There's a whole report that we put together for you that was circulated to the community that will talk about tidal influences and, and surge issues. The canal maintenance project, the, the projected timeline is on the dais. I ask that you review that. If you have any questions, see me. Staff, I circle, I wrote GPS on my notebook and I circled it. Did I, I said GPS? Oh, yes, thank you. So, the GPS boat thief is back. Howlandale Beach was hit with seven GPS device thefts, sorry. Seven GPS thefts occurred on the waterway at Howlandale Beach. As you remember, a couple of months ago, we had the pandemic between Adventure and Sunny Isles. Well, now he's hitting Howlandale Beach. We'll be doing some enforced enhancements. I ask all residents to check their boats frequently and let us know if they feel, if you see a GPS missing. And I'd like to end my manager's report with congratulating Chief Hervello, Lieutenant Diaz, and Lieutenant Perez in their leadership and having the town's police re-accredited for the second time. It's now the third time that we go through the accreditation process, but we were in Tallahassee after the last council meeting where we received our re-accreditation. Kudos to the men and women in blue in Golden Beach. Getting re-accredited is not an easy feat, and so congratulations, chief, for your leadership and congratulations to the lieutenants.
Congratulations.
That is the manager's report.
Thanks, chief. Okay, moving right along, move on item number K. Ordinance is second reading, there are none. Item L, ordinance is first reading, there are none. Item M, quadratus resolution, there's none. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number one, official minutes of the September 17 final budget hearing and regular town council meeting. Item number two, resolution of town council recognizing Florida City Government Week, October 21st through the 27th. Item number three, a resolution of town council authorizing the surplus of 2019 Palau's, uh, 900 XP Ranger from the town's fleet. Those three items on the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Nope. Okay, uh, moving right along to item number O, civic center complex master plan discussion. Town manager.
So, mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to provide a, a brief historical...
Can we wait for...
Can we move to something else and come back to it?
Can we move to something else and come back to it?
No. Ken, no, go on.
Who?
Go on, Alan. I'm sorry, go on.
Sorry. Who's asking?
So this is still include the minutes?
No, no, we're done with that. We're going on civic cent- center master plan discussion.
Did you talk about the Halloween?
I did.
But did things change or?
So what I mentioned during my report is that Halloween this year may not be held in North Park, and so it may be relocated to the beach pavilion. And as it relates to the discussion from the last meeting, no, we didn't discuss that yet. Because there's, we're basically, so if we keep Halloween in the, so go to that issue. If we keep Halloween in, at North Park, we're not changing any of our procedures except for no vehicles will be heading north on Golden Beach Drive if they don't live north of Golden Beach Drive. So anyone who comes in, who's gonna come to the event will have to come south and park in the south. We feel that's gonna diminish the issues that we had on the north side of town with the overcrowding and the parking issue. So by not allowing people to go north on Golden Beach Drive, we're not gonna have the headaches that we've had in years past. So everyone will be forced to come and park south. So Twiddle Park and then all in this area here.
But it might be moved to the beach pavilion.
I understand. I just wanna know the dynamic at where will, because I can imagine a traffic jam, you know, a police officer telling people, no, you can't go that way, and they say, well, I'm going that way. They're my friend, and I wanna get it.
They're not gonna go that way.
So the police, you're gonna have.
If somebody's giving this brief, we'll force them to go north onto the Center Island Bridge, and the police will deal with them there, and if the person is unruly and doesn't take the police direction to leave or go south, then there are legal recourse that a police officer can take for somebody not following a direction.
So the police officers will be posted right at the strand.
If we keep the event in North Park,
Yes.
you will not go north on Golden Beach Drive unless you live, physically live with an address, with an ID card, north of the strand. If you're an invited guest, welcome to Golden Beach, park south, and walk to your friend's house.
But the problem.
With the exception of people in, with the exception of, with the, with the exception of handicaps or somebody who's legally not able to.
But I guarantee you it's gonna end up at the beach pavilion, because if you look at the tides, the biggest, one of the biggest tides is the very end of our town. It's gonna be wet.
And if it happens at the pavilion, then everyone will park on Golden Beach Drive and walk, walk over.
Depends what time the tide is though.
It's not just.
It's gonna remain wet.
Yeah, yeah, cuz the mayor.
They can't have it money.
A member, a member of the council had the same observation. This has not, this has nothing to do with water, the time of day. It has to do with what occurs and the saturation of the field.
And it's gonna be saturated.
I won't know that until, I will make, we will make, we won't make that, we, the mayor and I won't make that decision until the twenty ninth.
It's a game day decision.
On the twenty ninth, we will make that decision. It's not a game day decision.
Game before game, play game.
So I just wanna talk about something real quick. You got eighteen, nineteen, twenty spaces at the, at Golden Beach.
The west slot?
The west slot.
The west slot's available, the strand, the strand boat dock, the Center Island Bridge, all of Golden Beach Drive, all of Twiddle. I mean, that's more than enough.
Be open to anybody. Is that correct?
So it's open to anyone who's been invited by the community to come. I mean, we're not advertising on Channel Seven to come to Golden Beach Halloween. But it's, the way it works now, the reason you get an influence of people in Halloween is because you, our residents, have invited your friends to come to our community. Ninety-nine percent of the people that come to Golden Beach is because they know someone, or their kids at school say, hey, come to my house tonight, and they bring thirteen kids in a minivan, which is what we've seen. And we don't discourage that in Golden Beach. We, we don't discourage, we don't, we don't pass out wristbands. We try to just control the safety of the area affected. So this year, by not allowing vehicles to go north, we feel that it's gonna be a very safe environment. If it's, if it's in the park, moving, look, moving it to, to the beach pavilion is a, is a decision that I came up with. Literally, Michael, one that I asked you this afternoon. So we don't have a game plan for the beach pavilion yet, but it'll be treated just like every other event. People who have been invited to join us at the event will join us at the event, and we'll have to figure out parking for those people.
As long as, as long as traffic moves, you know.
Well, traffic will be, traffic, don't forget, we also now do, we also do different things now. We now check your trunk, we check your car, we check your bags. So traffic will move at a rate that traffic needs to move to provide a safe environment for our residents. I'm, I'm not concerned that, you know, ABC guests is waiting forty minutes or thirty minutes on A1A or on Golden Beach Drive because we're doing our safety check. Our residents will have priority. Anyone who has a legal Golden Beach decal will be flagged through the come in. There won't, there'll be no delays, nothing. They'll be escorted around. But if you're not, if you're not a Golden Beach resident, I'm sorry, if you don't like the fact that you're waiting, then don't come to our event. Thank you, but no thank you.
If it's gonna be moved to the pavilion, just make sure whatever we did renovation wise, you know, whatever rides we're bringing in, let's make sure the floors aren't ruined.
Yeah, everything will be in the asphalt in the parking lot and a couple of rides on the sand in the back.
So usually have very large attractions in Halloween. Any reason why it has to, if it has to be moved, it goes to the beach pavilion as opposed to here, Twiddle Park?
Yeah, very simple. Same issue as North Park. If we have, same issue. So if we have ground saturation in North Park, we will have it worse in Twiddle Park because the elevation of North Park is higher than the elevation of Twiddle Park. So we cannot use this area, and since this area is not paved yet, I can't put rides in an area that's not paved because it's very unsafe. So the only area that has not been affected by this, by the town's paving project is the beach pavilion, and that's why the decision has been made to move it to the beach pavilion.
So if it's at the beach, it will be in the middle of the.
There will be rides. So the exact same setup that we have, have already prepaid for, for this year at North Park will be accommodated. Not a single ride will be taken off the list at, at, at the beach pavilion. So in the parking lots and in the sand area. So there's enough, there's enough hard surface that allows us to accommodate for those, and, and if you want, we'll publicize to, tomorrow, we'll publicize all the rides so you can see that we're not taking a single thing off. It's all being.
Same thing with the food.
It's all, it's all gonna be accommodated at the beach pavilion.
Okay. Let's move on to, anyone else have any comments on that?
Just a quick item question.
Sure.
If you're gonna do it on the beach, isn't that gonna be an invite to anybody driving on A1A that there's a party on the beach?
No, no.
And no place to park.
Well, not only that, but no more than, no more than if I'm driving through town and I see a bunch of cars trying to get into town, and I'm driving my kids to go trick or treating in Howland Beach, and I see, well, there's a bunch of cars going there. Our event's not closed to the public. We're municipal government, open access. All of our events are open to anyone who wishes to attend. What we don't do is we don't advertise anywhere. So if I'm driving by Halloween night to go to Howland Beach and I see a bunch of cars going into this community, I may say, hey, let me take my kids there as well. So no more than and no less than what would normally.
But it's gonna be a very inconvenient for people to park, so they're not gonna stop.
Because they can't park on A1A.
And they see the guardhouse, they're not gonna go, right, right. Okay, still have a lot to go. Any other questions?
No, if we do that, though, we have police officers so that you cannot stop. Is there a way that we can put signs, no stopping on there?
So, so we will, we will create an MLT, which is a means of, mode of transportation, plan for transportation for this event irrespective of where it is, and you just have to trust that we do our job correctly. But I can't give any assurances and I can't tell you what we're doing.
Okay.
Just cuz I remember for one of the problems, there was a house that had people stopping and going into it for. And cars were parked and just stopped the whole A1A from moving for.
So we, we will take all necessary precautions to provide a safe and adequate Halloween environment for both our residents and our guests irrespective of how inconvenient it may be.
Okay. With that, we're gonna keep the meeting moving. We're gonna go over the civic cent- civic center master plan discussion.
Apparently not.
The two people who need.
No, they're coming right now. Go on, you can start your.
Okay. So I'll give you a brief overview in terms of our residents' participation and what, how this project has developed. In two thousand and nine, the majority of this commission directed the town council, the administration, to do an assessment of a needs for a new civic center or town hall was the idea at the time. We engaged a company called C3TS, which is today called Stantec, who did a needs assessment and determined that a new city hall was needed. At the time, because there were no resources and because we were knee deep in our CIP project, the project was put on, not on hold, but it was put on the baby steps to fully develop the concept. In two thousand and seventeen, the city council directed me to get more aggressive with that plan. And at the April twenty eighteen meeting, after two meetings prior to that in twenty eighteen, we presented what we called the Civic Center Taj Mahal. Councilman Einstein, you were a member of the public at that time. You were a resident, you were a resident Einstein at that time, and you came to the meeting and you very eloquently spoke about the needs of our community and the history of what happened when you were not, when you were a council member. And at that meeting, the Taj Mahal project died, and it died very radically. The council said, that is too big, and our residents will not support it. And we made a promise that evening, and if you don't believe me, you can go to our website under videos and look at the April seventeen twenty eighteen video. Watch it, and we clipped it to just the civic center discussion, so you don't have to watch the whole meeting. You just watch that portion of the meeting. At that meeting, we made a commitment to come back with a plan with four steps. One, that we can afford without passing a single assessment or raising the military. Two, that it be to scale. No one thought that the Taj Mahal project was best. Just give us this quick and dirty, what do you really need for a new city hall? Three, if we can get a new amenity for our residents, great. If we can't, so be it. And four, that we do so in a manner that's responsible. So the idea of a civic center complex started to emerge. One night while I was taking a shower, believe it or not, I said, wow, what if we can achieve the amenity in a new city hall by preserving the old city hall? And a lot of our residents thought that this building was historic, which it is not. This building is not historic whatsoever. We could knock it down tomorrow morning if we wanted to. And so, and the idea of keeping two, now having two facilities reduced our costs immensely because we did not have to add the square footage of a new facility for that amenity, and we could preserve this building and provide an amenity. So the idea of keeping this building as a gym, sauna, movie room, playroom, card room, whatever we want it to be, was born. Mayor Singer and I started to sell the idea of two facilities, and at the April twenty nineteen meeting, let me back up. During the elections, before the elections, we did a survey of all of our residents. Asked them what are their priorities, what did they want, what did they did not, did not want. That was the first survey. During the elections, we then asked our residents to rank the amenities in orders of priority. So we listed some, some amenities, and our residents spoke to us. Those who wish to speak to us spoke to us. After Councilman Einstein was sworn in and Councilman Bernstein was sworn in, the council said, let's, let's keep on developing the plan and bring to us something for us to consider. At the April twenty nineteen meeting, the first phase of the design criteria was presented. I met with all, it was presented to the public, the public participated. The design criteria started to be finalized and developed. We took the months during the summer. We advertised in every newsletter on an e-blast. We did a special e-blast, not even just the local e-blast to just those residents who are interested in the agenda. We did the mass e-blast to everyone, saying civic center discussion. This is where you get to speak to us. And no one came. The design criteria, I met with every council member during the summer. We took the information of all the council members to really put together a final design criteria package. That design criteria package, the decision was made from a cost perspective. Remember, the second premise was can we afford it? Was to go with a design build plan that guarantees, guarantees the maximum we're gonna pay for that building. If there are cost overruns, not on the town. The contractor, the design team, is responsible for those cost overruns. So so long as we spell out what we want and we guarantee a price, doesn't matter what happens. Scaffold falls, building falls apart, it's undone. It is bonded. We require a bid bond, we require a building bond, we require assurances. There's a whole selection process. There is a two-hundred-page RFP that will be released. At the last council meeting, after all of our residents were invited to participate in the discussion and join us at the meeting very publicly, independently emailed to them, the public decided not to participate, for whatever reason they chose not to participate. But this council was presented a design criteria package that was ratified and voted on. This evening, what I'm bringing to you as a discussion item, not for council action, not needed unless council decides that action is needed, is some changes that we've made to the design criteria. It's in red on the dais after some very extremely delightful and enlightening conversations that we had with every council member after that meeting. And I'd really like to just publicly thank Vice Mayor Bernstein, who really took the time and effort to go page by page with myself and the design expert to give us some really good feedback, all of which we've incorporated. There are some small tweaks that we're gonna make between now and Friday, not material in fact, so it has no material impact on you. But the design criteria package that you have before you, that has the red highlights, is exactly the design criteria that you voted on at the last council meeting with just some minor changes that we are going to incorporate. Steve and I are, Steve and I are about one day away from finalizing the final RFP, which we're gonna release on Friday. Now, we did release, this is some great news, we did release a teaser RFP save the date two Fridays ago, and some exciting things happened. One, seven hundred and fifty-eight design build teams received that email. And we immediately started getting emails and phone calls from design build companies as far away as London and as close as to our backyard, Architectonica, with a true interest in bidding for this project. We've had firms like Foster from London, ODP from Hollywood, Architectonica, and others who have expressed an interest. So should, should everything go as planned, so should everything go as planned, the RFP will be released on the, on Friday. After the RFP is released, there's a mandatory pre-bid meeting that's gonna be held. I, I'm sorry, I don't know where my, can somebody let me borrow their coffee? Of the, of the timeline? I don't know where mine is. Here, sorry. I apologize, I just don't have my money. So the RFP will be released on Friday. There's a mandatory pre-bid meeting on November fifteenth where we can answer questions in a public forum to all those who wish to participate. The request proposals are due back on January seventeenth. That is when we will do the bid opening at noon. On the twenty-second and twenty-third, a selection committee appointed by this council will meet to hear all presentations by those members who have responded. That selection committee will have until January thirty-first to rank the finalists for this council. The council will have a very public and open workshop all day on February sixth to meet with the top three firms that the committee has ranked for you. And the council will then select and approve a responsible respondent so that the mayor, myself, and the attorney can convince, can.
Negotiate a contract.
Begin the negotiations of a contract that will then come back to you, that will then come back to you for final ratification and approval. Once that contract is ratified and approved, the process begins like this. At thirty, sixty, ninety, and a hundred percent of the plan's design, through a phased permitting project, the administration, as well as the council, will provide feedback on the thirty, sixty, and ninety percent of the plans to make sure that the plans are consistent with what they committed to. And the reason I say as part of a phased project, a phased permitting project, we will allow for this project to be constructed in phases. So when foundation and the superstructure is ready for permitting and construction, so to accelerate the timeline, we're gonna allow for phased permitting. This permit process will be done through a third party, so we are using special inspectors. So the town's inspectors are not responsible. Since most of our inspectors are residential, and this is more of a commercial, we're gonna be requiring a special inspection. That does not mean that our building official does not re-sign off on it. There's a whole process as it relates to sip, to special inspections. And hopefully, we will break ground on this project sometime in November. Councilman Einstein, as it relates to your audit issues, all right, sorry, Councilman Mendel, as it relates to your audit issues, due to our auditing, our audit requirements with the bondholders, it is too late for this, the twenty nineteen fiscal year, to be audited by a new firm. But I commit to you tonight in front of everyone that we will go out with an RFP for the twenty twenty audit, which is right when the project will commence, and I hope that satisfies your concerns. But there's a timing issue and there's a sequencing issue, so I commit to you that for the twenty twenty audit, we will go out with an RFP for a new order, but it's a little bit too late for us to do it for the twenty nineteen. In fact, the twenty nineteen, it starts in November. The pre-audit starts in November. It starts in November. The pre-audit starts in November. So it's a little bit too late, but I, I agree with you that it's important that we, that we look at our fiscal house. I can assure you that our fiscal house is in good order. Um, but that is the timeline and that is the history as to what happened with our projects. I stand ready for questions. Mayor, does that cover all the thing you wanted me to cover?
Yeah, so just very quick comments. Uh, like you said, uh, I wanna actually thank, uh, Councilman Bernstein for, for all his, all these inputs. Uh, I went through them this morning. They're all pretty good. I mean, there, there's only one thing I wasn't clear on. Uh, we're asking for one new clay tennis court.
So, so in our, so in our, um, in our, in our list of amenities that we would like to see at, to replace the existing amenities, it's in the list. If it can be achieved, it'll be brought to the council. Um, but if you, if you look at the list, we talked for about a basketball, clay court, uh, And let's assume that it, that it's in the proposal and the council decides later it doesn't want it. You could take it off.
But it doesn't seem like there's enough space for all these.
So one of the things that Councilman Bernstein, and he can speak for himself, but let me just try to help a little bit real quick. Councilman Bernstein, the mayor and I looked at our parking needs. We do recommend and we do feel that we can get rid of more parking spaces in front of town hall to provide more park space and provide, um, parallel parking along the perimeter similar to North Park and South Park to still receive the benefit of parking, but get the green space needed for more amenities.
And the, and the other, one of the other things we did is
Okay, yeah, I see. I thought it was in, so that's not really site B, I guess, right?
Correct. It's kind of the, the new parking base. Yep.
One, one of the other things I mentioned to everyone is optimizing the green space and basically activating it. And so if you looked at the previous drawings, there was a lot of green space that, a lot of large area green space, like the green space just to the north of here. But there's really nothing you can do on it. And when you grab all those different green spaces, they end up being quite uh, substant- substantial. So just by putting them together, you create a lot more green space and you have the opportunity to create a little bit more fields in different places.
So the, the dog park sort of stays the same though?
No, dog park goes in the back. So again, what we're asking is for, so here's what we're asking. It has, it has changed.
No, and it had, the dog park hasn't changed since the last.
So, so here's what, here's what we're, so it has and it hasn't. Don't forget, we're asking the respondents to provide us with a site plan and how they propose to lay it out. So we are giving two, two, two suggestions as to where it can go, but so we're, we're giving two suggestions as to where it could go, but at the end of the day, the respondents will tell us what they feel the site plan should be. And to ease the questions of the residents that send in the emails, the final decision as to whether we install a clay court or not or whether we put a, a toddler pool instead, right? A toddler, not a pool, but you know, those little water areas. That will be all up to the council. So I, I don't want us to lose sight of what the objective is. So something like an amenity, like a tennis court or, or parking bays, those could definitely be discussed before we sign the final contract in terms of site, in terms of what we want. If the cost is too big or we determine the maintenance is too, too much, you could definitely eliminate that later. But let's ask for it upfront if that's what you want. We included the clay court because one, a lot of our tennis residents have asked for clay courts. Two, the clay courts in the areas have gone away. And three, the technology for a clay course has changed. If you remember, this council four, five meetings ago authorized a new clay court on the north side of town using new non-clay technology. So the maintenance of the new clay surface courts have actually diminished in costs. You guys remember the house at the old Guarino House that you approved that court? That is a clay court. So we feel that the maintenance issues that were concerned in the email are null because of the new technology. But if the council decides prior to us signing contracts, that a clay court's not what we want and we want a toddler sweat play area, then we could deal with that then. But we shouldn't, we shouldn't derail, we shouldn't derail what we're getting. It is gonna be included as our, our requirement. It will be included as one of the requirements that we add a, a new clay surface court as part of the amenity offerings to our residents. Because remember, number three, number three was can we increase the amount of amenities that we offer to our residents? We are by doing the gym, by possibly adding a clay court, by adding the do- a real dog park and by adding an enclosed AC waterproof area for parties in the new building.
The tennis courts are pretty busy, right?
Our tennis courts
Again, I don't wanna harp on the tennis court.
My real issue is this, if we do, cause everyone's gonna come back with a clay tennis court. I don't know the cost of one, maybe it's negative.
Well, if we run over, we may have to eliminate certain amenities and we'll have to look at it and discuss it as a whole.
But they're not gonna run over. They're gonna come in at the five point two number. So maybe we get a different design. Maybe we get better amenities if we limit the amount of amenities. We're telling them this is our minimum. So I, I wanna go out and say, let's do, let's do it all because then we're gonna get a, not the best design overall because they're gonna stick to that.
So I have, so I can give you, so I can give you a fair number because we did ask the resident on the north side of town while he was paying for his court. He said thirty seven thousand.
Okay, so it's not
It's not gonna, it's not gonna change.
But the new, anyways, the new layout, I, I like this much better. It does optimize the green space as you're saying.
We went even further today. And, and one of the big things that we picked up in our discussions was the concept of shared parking. So right now you have the town center, I mean, it's the, the town hall, which is gonna have people coming in all during the week, Monday through Friday, when people aren't really using it so much. And, but over the weekend, people aren't gonna be using it. So in the future, when you look at, like if someone from north, the north of town wants to come over, the idea, the old thinking was you're just gonna come right down Golden Beach, but now With, with, with this new parking right there, now you can do it just as easy on A one A, pull into the civic center. And so we have all this surplus of parking.
Plus it eliminates driving on Golden Beach Drive.
Right, and that, and the, and it's gonna be limited to Golden Beach residents. And one of the other things that brought up with Alex is that putting the basketball court here has some issues because what's gonna happen is this parking lot is gonna suddenly be available all day till about six o'clock because town hall's open. So you're gonna have people coming in all the time parking here to play on the basketball courts. And there's really no way to stop them because this is all public parking. So I talked to him about trying to move this, in this area right here to make it more for residents, so we're not, we're gonna have less
So we're not advertising the court on A one A.
And, and moving some of these facilities over. And if you look at, just by moving this over, shifting this court over, you, you really, you get more green space. And one of the big concerns is just saying moving it closer.
That, that closer in the basketball court, where are you moving at?
Just moving and trying to move it down here.
At the end of the day though, someone, someone's gonna design
At the end of the day, a site planner will
No, I like moving the basketball court on A one A.
And yeah, and then we combine more green space. And one of the things like we did with the country club, if you notice, it used to be all commercial use and we took all the green area around the commercial use that was zone commercial. We gathered up, we put it all together. We got seven acres. And so that's seven acres. We did, we did redistribute it someplace and that's how we were able to do that next phase. And I just thought by gathering up all this green space, even if you don't have the money for it right now, you create the green space so you can do it later. And we take away like some of the concerns over these residents right here where they don't want big huge parking lots. And now all of a sudden, you're shifting the parking away into a more commercial area. And the other big thing is to make this thing happen, which no one's really been talking about. You're, you're gonna have to have fire trucks come through here. And so even if, like one of the things that might happen is if you have to shorten this to open, widen this and the dog park goes, you could always put the dog park over here. So there's, we just talked about certain things that were in there.
There's more flu- fluidity to this new concept. And, and the great thing is the design teams will tell us what the site plan that they feel most maximizes your green space and meets all your requirements are gonna be. And you'll be able through the selection committee, rank them. The residents will be able to participate in discussions that's gonna be held during the public or presentations. And the wonderful all-day workshop on February sixth, where we're all gonna be here to listen to the plans, ask questions of, of the designers. And then this council will make a selection as to which of the three top presenters they feel most comfortable with to award that contract at the February meeting. We, we've added a couple of steps and the reason I'm being a little bit sarcastic is because we want our residents, we've, we listen to you. We hear your concerns and we're adding more steps to the process so that you understand that we really do respect your input when you give it to us. And so participation is, you know, nine tenths of, 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 of the deal. You have to participate. And so we, we do listen and that's why we've changed the calendar. We've added some great amenities and there's a resident who wishes to speak, so let me shut up.
Hold on one second. Let's just, the council finish first and then I'll open to the public. And go, go, go on. Ken, I'm sorry. So, well Jaime, you have anything else?
No, no, I just wanna say, great job.
Go on.
We, we went over some other stuff there. Is that gonna be incorporated later or?
Yeah, the stuff that you and I haven't discussed, they're incorporated.
Okay. Um, and you can get into the blazing or whatever, some of the issues, but, um, you know, in terms of looking at this budget, I take back some of the comments I had, um, about going to the public and maybe maybe with the council's direction of wanting to push this forward, we can give everyone the chance to see this and maybe advertise it a little bit stronger.
So outside of the, outside of the e-blast, the newsletter, the channel eighty, five sixty two, whatever the channel is, six, six sixty five.
Well, just me just putting it on Golden Beach, on the sign, just kind of promoting it the same way we did the Iguana, like very strong and just promoting this a little bit. That, that's all I would say.
Yep. Okay. Councilman Einstein?
Yeah, so Alex, I, I just want you to elaborate a little bit more because one of the questions I asked Alex, I said, so they're gonna give us a plan, like a full set of plans all specked out. And what's gonna be the draw schedule on those plans? Okay, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you mentioned it again tonight and you're being forthright with it, but what we are doing is that we're permitting this. And they're gonna start to build and is right away.
No.
Well.
No. So you're going, you're going to, so you're, we're gonna make a selection. And you're gonna authorize the mayor and I to, to negotiate a contract with the attorney. And we're gonna bring that contract back for ratification. Now, the design begins. There are thresholds for review, thirty, sixty, ninety and a hundred. Right? But at, let's say sixty, the superstructure has already been approved. The foundation, the civil work has already been approved. So just like today in Golden Beach, you can start your foundation work. You could start your civil work without your final plans being approved. We're gonna allow phased permitting on this project. There's no reason why we we're not, there's no reason why we're holding back the civil work, like your, your sewer, your stormwater system, your drainage, your water to be delayed because that has no correlation with the actual final plans for the building itself.
What, what's your concern? So the, the layout of the rooms and everything.
So at thirty percent, you're gonna have, at thirty percent, you're gonna, at thirty percent, you will have your schematic design of each floor. Right? But what you may not have is where the wiring's going through or where the water piping's going through or what the finishes is are. But you'll have, you'll have your superstructure agreed to at thirty and at sixty, you'll have more developed plans. And at sixties, we're, we're gonna allow, at sixty is when we'll allow phased permitting to commence.
Okay.
That, that, that
What's your concern? So, yeah, I, I guess, you know, when you, when you didn't build your house from scratch, but you did a remodel and, uh, of your house at some point. So, you know, when you did the remodel, you know, they gave you a full set of plans, exactly what you were doing, down to the doorknobs, down to everything at that stage. We are going to have built the foundation and done other things. And there's going to be some items left to choice for later on. The superstructure will begin.
Your structure
And what we're building inside of that structure, what it'll fit in. If it's a twenty by forty room and later it's gonna be a
No. So, so I
I, I just wanna make sure everybody understands this.
So at sixty percent, you're gonna have fully developed floor plans and space allocations. What, what you're not gonna have a sixty percent is, you know, what kind of, what kind of finishes we have in the wall or what kind of paint we're gonna have, um, or, or where light bulbs are gonna go or lighting fixtures. But the, the superstructure, right? Your foundations, your pilings, there's no reason to delay commencing your pile work, your foundation work, your civil work, so you get a hundred percent. By the way, today, today in Golden Beach
What's the biggest item in, in that list of items that will not be determined when we do the phased permitting on the, what's gonna be left out?
Finish, finishes, finishes, maybe where, where certain, like generator maybe placed or the, or the water cooler. Chris, help me out a little bit because you do a lot more of this. I'm sorry, Mr. Miss, I always say your last name on Masiani.
Typically how it works is
Can you just join us to, uh, real quick, hold on. By the way, this is important for all of our residents to know. In Golden Beach, for the last five years, any new home that has been built, has been built through phased permitting. This is not new to Golden Beach. It may be new to some of our council members who have not built homes recently. But every single house in Golden Beach has, now does phased permitting. Why? It accelerates your construction schedule. It allows for your building to be more habitable in a faster period of time.
So, so typically in construction, when you're starting from ground up, you have to finish then archu- architectural set of plans first. Develop a CAD, which is basically the program of that property or that footprint. And that is given to the MEPs, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. And they work off of that and they say, okay, this air conditioning duct will go here. It's gonna run that way. It's gonna do this. It's gonna do that. But basically what you should get even by the thirty percent is the footprint.
That's correct.
And that footprint doesn't lie. That's the footprint. So basically that footprint's gonna dictate where a column needs to go to hold up the roof. And whether we like it or not, that column can't move unless we wanna change something structurally and, you know, re, reinvent the wheel.
Here we go.
But typically, once that footprint's done, it's gonna be a lot of engineering, mechanical, electrical plumbing, finishes and other just little stuff like that that gets involved with it. But it really isn't anything major. You're gonna have that footprint there. The box is the box, the bones are the bones and that's what it's gonna be. Now, let's say they place a generator somewhere and you don't like it. You could say, hey, move it over here. And they say, oh, it may cost a little bit more money because wiring's a little bit longer, but those are things you can negotiate and work out with them, but the, the footprints, the footprint.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Mr. Masiani, do you, would you agree that a project that's done through phased permitting is responsible and it seems to be the industry standard now?
Well, yeah, I would actually suggest it because if you have to wait till you have a finalized permit and you can't start doing anything, it's gonna really hinder your construction project. So you definitely wanna phase it out, start doing the pieces because you could always work out what's gonna go on the inside.
Let me also just put this into the public domain because it's important for our residents to know. So all of the members of the BRAB and some selected residents, Mr. Masiani being one of them, and I always get his name, last name said wrong, were given the design criteria and asked for critique. He actually took time out to critique page by page. And so I wanna thank him publicly for his service. And he's agreed to be a part of our review team on a moving forward basis and at thirty, sixty, ninety percent, he's agreed to be a part of our consulting team that will help us review. So this is someone who's in the industry. So has Mr. Hollow and Mr. Cohen. Um, have agreed to do the same. And so has Ms. Mamun and Mrs. um, Gadul have agreed to be a part of our, our process. So we feel very confident that between our resident volunteers, which we are grateful for and the team that we have in place, we're gonna be able to manage this project very effectively and in a way that's responsible to give us a delivered project within a desirable time period.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? When you discussed the thirty percent, um, I followed you with everything that you were saying up until one, one last part. When you're looking to figure out where to put the generator and where to put everything, I would think you'd first wanna kind of figure out your layout in the building before you have all your mechanical and structural in there. Because depending on where that, what needs you might want in that interior might change in some of those locations. So you, the generator might move, the, you know, everything might move depending on where you have. And I just wasn't sure. You saying go ahead and get, just build a building and then
No.
Develop everything afterwards.
Yeah, so what I was saying is, is that the, the architect basically is going to give you the bones. And those bones you have to respect because you're gonna have structural entities under the ground that's gonna hold that up. So that box, basically what it is, it's gonna house all of the offices and whatnot. So that box, basically what it is, it's gonna house all of the offices and whatnot, have to be built first, have to be put on the plan first. Then that's handed over to the engineer and then the engineer, as it gets later in, that's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fireworm, fire sprinkler.
Structural.
They're going to then work around structural. Structural has to be
At the thirty.
in in the before the thirty, because you got to work there. But when you get to those guys, they then have to work around the layout that was dictated and said
By the box.
this is how it's gotta be by the architect.
But just, you're doing the layout of the offices in in a general way, but for the most part, most of it's kind of done when you lay in your mechanical.
And I want to make sure
The mechanical follows. The 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 architectural, the architecture, the architectural plans are first. They are gonna provide you with a site plan, uh, floor plans, um, all of the things that you guys are worried about, okay? You you're not gonna be interested in the sixty, ninety, and a hundred percent drawings. They're gonna be technical drawings.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, you you're you're gonna have in the architectural phase, which is that initial phase, you're gonna have, you're gonna understand exactly what you're gonna get by square footage, by design, floor plans, elevations, everything, okay? You may not be down to to the hardware and stuff. I know that you talked about that. But and and once that's done, these other trades, they they all follow. They're they're going to design the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all to conform to the design that you've selected. So once you've done that, you can start, once you've decided on the architectural plan and gotten basic structural stuff in place, you can almost begin the clearing, grubbing, site work, um, uh, foundation work, which is what he's describing, to try to move that process along quickly. But what's gonna be happening during that process is all of the behind the scenes mechanical, electrical, plumbing stuff
Is all going on.
internal is all going on.
I'm sorry, that's
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
How did you have a question?
No questions.
I'm sorry, some of the resident
Can you just tell us quickly what are the requirements because of amenities that you're gonna send out? Do you have a gym?
So so the design criteria, the design criteria package is online and Mr. Clinton could give you a copy of it. But um, but in terms of the basics, we're asking for relocation of our existing basketball courts, our volleyball courts, the addition of a play court, a new dog park. Run of this facility that have a gym, a playroom upstairs that's for gaming and theaters, and then a party room and a party terrace in the new facility. So there'll be an indoor enclosed AC space equivalent to the size of the beach pavilion underneath the roof of the beach pavilion. That you can now have parties in that building. And if you wish to go on to the terrace on the back, you can go outside and that space will hold another three hundred people. So a party space for up to four hundred people.
Any other questions?
But sorry, Damon Addis for the record.
Chisela Addis, one eighty South Allen Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving item to P, uh, town resolution. P four, resolution to town council authorizing negotiations for the financing of the civic center master plan with City National Bank.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, authorizing negotiations for the financing of the civic center complex master plan between the town and City National Bank, providing for implementation of agreement and providing for an effective date.
Any a motion to approve?
Motion.
Any a second? Uh, time, I want you to just give a brief summary and then we'll go to the session.
Sure. So at the last council meeting, I provided you with a memo with that gave you an overview of what we did over the over the summer for the residents or in the audience tonight. Basically, this summer, Mayor Singer and I met with six independent banks, five of which were invited, five of which responded with a proposal. We ranked those. We invited the the top three banks to provide us their best and final proposals. The top three banks were City National, Northern Trust, and Iberia Bank. After receiving their best and final, based on the terms and based on the rate, indicative rates today, because we know that the rates will change, um, City National Bank came back with the most most responsible proposal and terms. They're offering us a one four million dollar loan on a draw schedule that we decide with a interest only during the first two, during the construction period. It goes to a fixed rate, an indicative rate today of two point six seven percent. No keep hitting penalties. That is your counsel on the last question. Mr. Diaz, I thought you wanted a two million dollar loan, not four million. As a reminder, we're using two million of drug money that we currently do not have physically in our hands. That we're gonna use that drug money to pay two million of that four million dollar loan. And then we have one point two million dollars of our own money to make the five point two million dollar budget that we have for this project.
But the two million dollars that we're using initially, we're paying that on interest only for twenty four months.
That's correct.
So everyone understands that.
And and um, so it is, so it is a four million dollar note. Two million will be paid back by drug money. The other two million dollars that we will, were forfeited assets, excuse me. The other two, the other two million dollars will be paid over a twenty year amortization. Um, covered for out of the existing budget. And we're not pledging any tax dollars, not a zero tax dollars are being pledged. They're being guaranteed with a budget to covenant or covenant to budget of non ad valorem revenues in our budget and we currently have set aside a respectable number for that purpose. I don't want to put into the public domain what that number is because it becomes public records and we're negotiating with the banks. But there's more than enough non ad valorem revenues to guarantee that note for the twenty years without increasing our ad valorem. And we cannot pledge ad valorem without a resolution, without a a vote of our community. And our community will not be asked to vote because we're not asking them to pay for it.
Any questions on the financing?
Yes. Uh, in the fine print, under conditions, covenants, depository relationship minimum one million.
That's correct.
Okay, so walk me through that.
So we're gonna have to take one million dollars out of our current um, depositors, whether it be the state, because we have three point something million dollars with the state, or whether it be with Northern Trust, or we decide to enter into a new banking relationship with this institution and move all of our money there. That decision will be made, that that decision will be made when we bring to you the final agreement and the final terms. Right now, what I'm proposing, and I haven't even shared this with the mayor, but I'm gonna share it now publicly, is that we take all of our builder bond money, which is about a million dollars, and move that money into that account.
And so when you put that million dollars, is that in an interest bearing?
Those things will have to be negotiated, but I guarantee you they are.
You're not, well, they're they're not saying we want this one million dollars in a non-interest bearing.
Correct. We'll we'll have to negotiate that as part of the final terms that we will bring to you for ratification. But my 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 intent, and again, I haven't shared this with the mayor, so I don't want him getting upset with me. But right now, until we can determine whether or not we're gonna end our existing banking relationship with Northern Trust, is that we can easily readily move a million dollars out of our builder bond money into that account beneath that criteria. And then we could evaluate on a on a moving forward basis if we want to enter into a new banking relationship. But we can still maintain Northern Trust, the SBA, and move the builder bond money and not have a problem.
And don't answer this if you don't think it's appropriate. On the builder bond money, do they, do builders get interest on
No, they do not.
Are we allowed to collect interest on that money?
And we earn interest.
And we're allowed to keep that interest.
That's correct. And I don't want to speak more about that.
Okay.
Okay.
So you feel like this is the best?
Yeah, we negotiate, we talked to each bank. Each bank did a great job. The reason, uh, one of the first reasons why we like City National Bank is a lot of municipalities use them
Fine.
for financing and we checked the references and they have the experience dealing with the municipalities.
And just as important was the indicative rates. I mean, the indicative rates was was a lot less than the other two respondents.
Yeah, I mean, that's
Any other questions?
Yeah, but they're not bringing any rates here on paper. They're pretty much saying we'll figure out two days before.
No.
I thought it's two points
Well, how can they?
Six, seven.
Well, if you look at the formula, okay, the formula is on the
On the second page.
On the second page. It's pretty much, that's how they came up with the two point six seven.
Do we have a page?
Yes, you do. It's part of your, it's part of your dot package.
It's in, it's in here.
It's the rate in the here.
If you look at it, pretty much, it's not on the spreadsheet.
No, no, it's not. It's not on the spreadsheet.
It's, shall we, what that document looks like?
Like this, with their logo?
With holes in it or no?
No, it's it's in your agenda. So if you don't have your agenda with
Oh, yeah. Okay, fine.
Basically, that rate comes up to two point six seven. They feel over the next
What's the formulary?
Six months. I don't have it.
It says What's the formulary?
CMD adjusted rate plus one point six five percent times point seven nine. That's all.
So basically, so here's what happens. So we now go negotiate when we, two days prior to the fin, the final contract, they set the final rate. We know that rates are going down based on current current market conditions. Our goal is to try to get this to close relatively quickly. We're not gonna do what we did with the refinancing. Remember what happened with the refinancing? We dragged our feet and we lost
Rate went up, yeah.
So we're gonna try to lock this in within the next thirty to forty five days and bring you an action item for council approval with a final contract with with City National. And we'll probably do an immediate draw just to fund our coffers so we can start paying for some of our costs so that we can lock that rate in. So that may be what exactly what we do. We may do an initial draw of about a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars, lock the rate in and grab them by the, you know what?
Okay, sounds like a plan.
So this vote is to negotiate?
This vote is to authorize that we enter into a final negotiation and bring to you a contract with City National Bank for um, terms and rates indicative to the term sheets that are provided for you tonight.
Council have final approval.
I just feel like that we don't have an actual number. That's based off a formula here. The other two that I see
But you but you won't. None of the banks, none of the banks give you an actual number. They're all indicative rates based on
That's not what he's saying.
No, but if you read the thing, it is. They all get adjusted.
So all of all of
These are, the other ones, unless I'm missing some footnote somewhere here, which I don't see any footnote.
No, if you look at Northern Trust's overnight live or plus one point one five taxes.
Iberia, Iberia is straightforward. It's just three point zero eight percent.
Fixed variable.
Fixed.
Fixed variable.
Fixed for ten years.
I know, but again, let let me explain to you again, with all these banks, these are indicative rates.
But it doesn't say that, that's what I'm saying.
But we met with them.
And it is indicative.
So so all of the, no, no bank can guarantee your rate until you go to closing. Unless you do, unless you do a rate lock and buy in that rate, which we have not done. So I bear, and and to be fair to the process, we told all banks, what is your indicative? If we were to close today, what's your rate? And that's the rate they gave us. So we, and in fact, um, City National guarantees this rate for the next forty five days. So if, within the next forty five days, you can bring to them a final contract that this council approves, that's gonna be our rate. Because they did rate, they did lock that rate for forty five days. So there's a lot more paperwork that you don't have, but so with Iberia, it's three point if we close today. If we close two months from now, it's gonna be a new rate.
But we're bringing the final contract to the council.
I don't know.
And that will define it.
And and remember, and remember what I said. My goal is that we bring you a co, a a contract at the November meeting and we do an immediate draw to cover our operating costs and our our consulting fees and all that stuff. So we can start to have the the loan and the rate locked in right away. So it may not be a large draw, but we're gonna start drawing it. Because remember, it's a four million dollar line of credit over the of the course of the of the project.
All right, I get it. I would just like to have all the different formulas. We're not comparing apples to apples here. I don't know what Iberia's formula is. So if we're seeing that rates might go down or something, if they have a library plus a different spread, then I could at least compare it to Northern Trust. I could compare it to City National. But here it's just
Well, Alex, maybe to help some of that, Mr. Mendels, some of that else issues, maybe just add on how long you have the rate lock and different things on there, just to be a little bit more specific.
We would have to take a recess and you take a recess and give me thirty minutes to do that.
Not not now, but I just mean
Okay. Just each of the, each of the indicative terms and indicative rates are in the actual agenda package?
Right. No, I'm, that's where I'm getting all the information.
Believe me, we want to, we want the lowest rate.
No, no.
Yeah, and we met with the individual banks and all three banks were great.
So Because, because, no, exactly. That's my point. Because these are, these are all city and
Six six five.
Northern. And Northern or four angles from where you're sitting.
And we're live on the website.
Iberia was an actual fixed rate.
At that day. And the same thing with this, with these two.
That's why, I guess
But there's still a final vote after this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's their final vote to approve the contract.
To prove the contract, right.
The term sheet doesn't say anything about indicative or anything.
City National's rate should be that or lower, okay? They were, I mean, they're lower by pretty significant amount.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
And we're anticipating rates going down.
Correct. So
That is true. You don't know for sure.
Any other questions?
So when
For peace of mind, for Councilman Mendel, for for peace of mind, if by the worst case scenario, when we bring you back the 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 final contract and the rate is higher than Iberia, then there would be just reason for you to maybe delay it then.
Question would be, can we negotiate with more than one?
No, we're negotiating, you're, we are only negotiating and bringing a final contract with City National Bank. That is it. The other two banks are now no longer on the field, on the table. They're out. Referee has referee has made a play. We are now negotiating final contract with City National Bank. That's what we're recommending to you.
The concern of mine was the uh, the banks familiarity dealing with government institutions.
That's correct.
Totally different. And City National Bank, I mean, did major cities and major city financing. Whereas Iberia locally, locally, they haven't nationally, uh, uh, regionally, they have in their defense, but locally, they didn't, they didn't have the experience. And Northern Trust is really not a bank. It's a trust.
Yeah.
And the only reason why they gave us, the only reason why they gave us this deal is because we bank with them.
And like you heard me say today on the record, and again, the mayor and I haven't really discussed this. But we we are committed to the one million dollars. We have not committed to moving all of our depository, all of our depository or our banking relationship with them. That's not part of what we're we're agreeing to tonight.
So the one million dollars, is that need to be there throughout the life of the loan?
Yes.
For twenty years?
That's correct.
And we have that in, we have bank money sitting in Northern now.
No, I know we do.
Maintained at that level.
By the, by the way, this actually helps us. So in your own investment policy that you ratify every year through your budget process, um, it asks for diversity and depositors, and we don't have that today because we only use the state and Northern. So this actually achieves us getting a higher rating as it relates to following our own investment policies.
And there's no prepayment penalty?
No, there's no
There's not.
I I read in one, there was one.
And and I've just, I've thrown it out there, another bank offers nine percent and they're offering two percent for our depositor, a million dollars. You know, during the life of a loan, if that were to occur, we're kind of
That's correct. But if you can get me that rate today, I'll move on.
It's hard to predict the future. Right. All the banks we dealt with wanted a depository rate, uh, relationship, every one of them, okay? They said, you know, one of the first questions was, you know, if we give a loan, you're gonna put money in the account. They just don't want to lend money because they're not making, if you look at the rate, they're not making any money off the loan.
Was it a million dollars or?
More, one of them, one of them wanted an exclusive banking relationship.
Okay, fine. Okay, I'm sure you negotiated the best.
And we'll and we'll continue to negotiate the best deal under these as our guiding principle.
I understand.
Okay, no, uh, no council comments, public comments? Sure.
You have to identify yourself for the record.
I wrote the letter that you guys read. I still have one question, which I'm not sure has been answered.
Ms. Bianco, you could only do me a favor, just come to the microphone so the residents at home could hear you.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. Nice to you, by the way.
Nice to see you too.
Yeah, first two years since you saw me.
My question is, are there any performance on what all this is gonna cost us on an operating basis? I'm not even sure what the capital cost is. If it's four or five point two million, that will also change our interest costs. And I don't, I mean, I've heard the word sauna. I've heard the words splash pad. I've heard the word
You haven't heard the word sauna from us.
That sauna was mentioned tonight, but so we could put a sauna in there. I don't think we are. Um, I've heard gym. I've heard dog park. I've heard clay tennis courts. I, all I want to know is, is if someone's actually looking at the operating cost and making sure we can afford this going forward.
So so we have looked at, we have looked at some indicative rates of cost of of maintaining the building. We're also designing the facility that has very low requirements. So for instance, let's talk about the gym because I've heard, a lot of our residents are saying, who's gonna man it? It's not gonna be a man gym. It's gonna be a gym like you have in any community where you have a key fob and you go in and you work out. And so we'll have a maintenance contract with the equipment. And so we'll have a lease for that equipment that gets maintained. Um, we have janitorial services for this building today. We'll have the same janitorial services for that building. Um, because that building's gonna be built with a more energy efficient plan, we may see some savings. This building is is very old. It uses incandescent lighting everywhere. We don't have LEDs. Um, the AC system is is over twenty five years old. So we're looking, yes, there will be some increases. But we have enough, if you look at our budget that the council has approved over the last five years, we have purposely put in our own um, reserves knowing that we're going to move to a new civic center complex. So there's two hundred and somewhat thousand. I don't want to give the exact number because we're negotiating final rates. But there's enough money in the existing budget with the existing military and we did a five year projection on our employee costs and all of our contract costs, and we still have what we feel is a comfortable breathing room number to operate that building. We're not adding any staff. We're not asking for any more support. to operate that building. We're not adding any staff. We're not asking for any more support. And all of the stuff that we're adding, so for instance, when we talk about the party room, it's just a room that we give you a key to. You're responsible for cleaning it. And if you don't clean it, we take your thousand dollar deposit. So what are the, the, whatever the deposits are. So we're, we're designing a system that fits in with the culture of Golden Beach and how we currently operate. So at the last council meeting, we talked about security and staffing. And so we've tried to design something that our residents, remember premise number two, that we can afford without raising taxes or without asking for military. And so that's why it's a nice financing, does not require a vote of our residents because we're not, we're not pledging a single tax dollar to this project, not one. All of the money that we're pledging to this project come from our non-advalorem revenues that have been built in conservatively and we have always received more than what we have conservatively built in. So we feel comfortable with this project.
That's great. I, I guess I would just feel comfortable if someone actually sat down with the spreadsheet and laid it all out. Cause I guarantee you that there's a lot of things that you want to think about.
We've been pretty financially prudent over the years.
And I, I'm not arguing. I vote for all of you guys.
No, but the town manager, we've gone through a five-year, before we started this project, we went through a five-year projection of what our costs would be with increases payroll, insurance increases and everything. And we feel confident that, uh, based on our projections that we are sufficient and we can afford this. If we couldn't, we wouldn't do this. We wouldn't take this endeavor on.
Let me make this statement publicly. I welcome a one-on-one meeting with you. I'm, I'll make myself available any day, uh, this week or the latter part of next week. The beginning of next week, I'm out of town for a work conference. But we can meet one-on-one and whatever, whatever you feel that we haven't looked at, I'd love to hear it. Like, just like I did with all the residents who gave us feedback on the construction, residents who manage buildings or man, I would love to hear, cause you, you may identify something that I missed and we'll have to look at that.
I, I just wanna make sure, has someone looked at it besides you?
Yes, we have.
You've all looked at it, have you all?
Yes, we have.
And Ronnie, I don't know if you noticed, in the last meeting, even in the last meeting, we talked about just the increase of changing something that might add one person and, um, we've been looking, we've been talking about it in that detail.
Okay. Okay. No, I'll trust you. I just wanna make sure it's been looked at.
And again, no increase in assessment, no assessment, no increase in taxes.
Well, there has been discuss, well, let me, you just said there should've been no discussion anywhere. That's not true. We've had several discussions on this item over the course of the last two years and we've had three discussions on this item this year alone. Our residents have chosen not to participate, but it's not because we haven't had the discussions available.
Okay. Well, let me say that I think your residents are confused as to what the actual cost is. You have paperwork out there saying it's four million now.
There's not a single piece of paperwork out there that says it's four million. The paperwork says it's a five point two million dollar project with a four million dollar loan. So whoever's putting misinformation out in the public to confuse our residents, I would ask you to please stop doing so. This council has always talked about a five point two million dollar project with a four million dollar loan. So, um, it's important that whoever's sharing information, get the information adequately shared. All of our documents are on our website, all of the agenda items and all the memos that I give to the council is out there. It has always been a five point two million dollar project with a four million dollar loan.
It can be built for five point two million.
It won't be built.
Is the new design criteria online now?
Yes, it is.
So, yeah, so.
Okay.
Although today information.
It is.
It's good that you trust us, but you can always bring in another point of view that-
And we wel- and we welcome it. And we welcome it.
I'm not looking for-
We may stick the fifteen dollars on you though.
I mean, I just, you know, it, it concerns me.
I know. Yes, ma'am. And-
We appreciate it. The what?
A clay court, for example. This is, how many times a day does that have to be brushed? Have you guys thought about like?
So, like I mentioned earlier, and I know you weren't here.
It's in a flood zone.
So, well, as I mentioned earlier, and I know you weren't here, so clay court technology has changed tremendous, tremendously.
I heard you say that.
Trem- tremendously. And so it doesn't need to be brushed anymore. So it's now lava rocks that is like clay court, so it doesn't get brushed as often. Um, it's a, it's a whole different, so the, I, so it's funny, cause we've had the same four points that are all misinformation points delivered to us by five different residents. So I know someone's feeding that information. So whoever that person is, please come and talk to me. Cause we've had four calls today with the exact same points and they're all coming from four different residents. So please, if you don't, if you're afraid of me, I, I promise I'll behave. I'll tie my hands. I won't yell. But, but it's important that you feel comfortable.
I'm not afraid. It's just, someone sent here, I think it was Ken, we've given a lot of attention to the, want the discussion here. And there wasn't this discussion when you walk in on the, whatever it is. So I think it's been, I, you know, I think-
No, we appreciate your input. Thank you.
And, and the one of the things that's giving me comfort is if you look at the schedule of what we have going forward, we're gonna have a lot of time to talk.
Okay.
We're gonna have a lot of time going forward to talk, where the public can see what's going on and make comments.
That's fine. I'll shut up now, but-
No, but we-
So here's the mention, so-
You guys know how often I'm here showing my face?
We mentioned this many times.
Never. This is how, how it's turned out.
So, we mentioned this many times before, but it's, it's good to even to keep mentioning it. None of this is act, we're doing the design build criteria, meaning that all, none of this is actually going to be as it. We're waiting for people to come in and pitch us essentially ideas. So nothing is really set in stone. We're gonna have processes.
So here, here's the other thing that we're gonna do. And I, I just called Michael to my side to tell you. So what we'll do tomorrow on our website, there'll be a separate independent area called Civic Center on the website. On that section, we'll put all the videos and discussions that we've had, every single memo that I've ever drafted to the council that the council has received on the dais. All of that will be put into one easy searchable folder that you can read, touch, smell, print, not smell, but read, print. So that, so our residents feel that instead of having to dig for something, Michael will make sure that it's there. You could see the videos, hear the comments, read every memo that the council has received, look at the design crit, we'll do two design criterias. The one, April and the final one, so that you can see the, the before and afters with all the site plans.
Maybe if you're flying around mailbox, probably need to look at it.
I, I just wanna comment that I think the reason that there's a confusion with five point two million versus four million, I'll bet you is because of the same reason when I spoke to you today about the agenda.
It's the loan.
When I saw the four million on the agenda.
It's only the loan.
I know, but remember I questioned you and said, I thought it was a two million dollar loan instead of a four because of the way we worded. So I'm guessing that's why everybody now is saying, is it a four million or a five point two?
We're only talking about the money that we need to borrow, not the money that the project has.
But I'll bet you that's part of the confusion.
But we'll make it clear by putting all that on the website. I think our residents will have a little bit more peace of mind. So we'll look at them.
And Michael, we also put on the, the main sign when you come in, just Civic Center, go to the website or just something to-
Yeah, sure.
Before we vote on this, I just wanna be clear on one last thing. Um, just wanna make sure I'm reading this right. It's, it fixed the City National Bank, uh, whatever the indicative rate is and it's, uh, two years interest only and then it's a fixed twenty-year rates.
That's correct.
So that indicative rate that we get two days after clo, or two days prior to closing, that would be the fixed rate for twenty years?
That's correct. Yes.
And the first two years interest only?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. So with that, uh, P four, a resolution to town council authorizing the negotiation for the financing of Civic Center complex master plan and City National Bank, roll, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Moving on to P five, thank you for your input.
With no prepayment.
No prepayment. Five, a resolution to town council appointing members to the security and public, uh, safety advisory board.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, appointing members to the town of Golden Beach Security and Public Safety Advisory Committee, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion.
Any second?
So we are counsel on the dais this evening, there's a memo from our residents or this director, Mr. Glidden. Um, so as you know, there's a bunch of committees in town that are, that are established by, by your code that don't, doesn't need. So what we're gonna ask you, we're, we won't take the time tonight, but we're, we're asking you tonight is to appoint two committees. And then we should talk about abolishing committees that have not met for years and that we can't get members for, and the creations of maybe one more committee to do like a catch-all committee for beautification, beach pavilion and recreation. But in your code, in your current code, you have an education committee that has not met in over eighteen years. Um, the recreation-
So they fail.
The recreation committee has not met since two thousand and nine, I think it was, when after I got, you know, after we started taking over all of our parties. The beach advisory has never met for the purposes as defined by the ordinance. Cause the beach advisory committee has, has been our beach pavilion committee. But when you look at the ordinance, the ordinance, that's not their jurisdiction. Their jurisdiction is beach re-nourishment and it, those type of issues. So tonight, we're asking you to appoint two. We'll be working with the attorney to, to either abolish committees or develop a new committee, um, and let us clean up. Because right now, you're not compliant with your or, with your own ordinance as it relates to committees.
So what do you want us to do?
We're gonna appoint the two committees tonight. Let us go back and get rid of some of these committees that haven't met forever and maybe create one super committee that's like a catch-all committee and just have three committees on.
The committee of all committees.
That's the perfect being for it.
Okay, so we're voting, uh, today, the members of the public, uh, safety board currently-
These are who we're appointing. They're not current or whatever, just, just who we're appointing.
Appoint Charles Gurman, Chris Gilson, El- Elizabeth Sharfkin, uh, Jesse Mandell and Lydia Eskenazi to serve as the members of the committee.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
So, uh, any comments? Public comments?
I know about that Lydia.
She's a little shady.
She tends to take the charge, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, she does.
I believe it.
What are you gonna do about the GPSs?
The votes out there.
If it dogs.
The dogs, all fifteen dogs. Roll call, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number six, a resolution to town council appointing members to the building regulatory board. Uh, go on, sorry.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, appointing members to the town of Golden Beach Building Regulation Advisory Board, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any a second?
Second.
So, uh, you're recommending the following people to the committee, Jerome Hollow, Isaac, uh, Merciano, Judy Mamoun, Judy Mamoun, uh, Z. Schiff and Alan Mackin to serve as members of the board and Eric Cohn, uh, Stephanie Haplin and Beth Gudall to serve as alternate members.
Yeah, let me just real quick on, on this item, on this one. So let me just remind the council, one, we are breaking our own rules. We're only allowed to have two alternates, but we're recommending three. This count, this committee is the most important committee. It has actual business that it does, but we have quorum issues. So we're shifting names around this time. We're putting the members who are really showing up and showing an, an interest. We respect all of our members and we thank them all for their service and we love them, but we need to make some adjustments. So we're moving some alternates to permanent and some permanent to alternate. And we are asking to name three alternates, even though the code only allows for two. Because we need to be able to have bodies. Because on quasi-judicial items, my staff does not count towards quorum. You changed the rules the last time that allows the staff to count towards quorum for non-quasi-judicial items. But for quasi-judicial items, you actually need four of the members present.
Instead of making those alternates, could you just have them as members and only require a quorum of a certain amount of people?
So we could do that as part of our cleaning up, but for tonight, let's do this. And I like that suggestion and the attorney just wrote it down. So we could definitely look at that.
Okay.
Good idea.
Any other comments?
Do we need more alternates?
No, we got-
No, no.
We have enough, we have-
And, and we're already outside of our-
We have eight people.
The code only allows for two. So.
Okay, any con, uh, public comment with that roll call, please?
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, now we'll move into, uh, discussion items. Town manager, you wanna go over the, uh, Craig Smith, uh, High Tide Evaluation Report?
So first we have Councilmember Einstein, who has a discussion on sea walls.
And docks.
And docks, unless he wants to table that item?
Did we discuss that?
You did that last time.
At the last meeting, you said, let's bring it back for further discussion because we rushed it during that meeting. So we did exactly what you instructed us to do.
I thought we were all through with an agreement.
Yeah, we were.
That's, alright, so what are you, what, what are you in agreement to?
You don't remember, but.
I, I, I think I remember. I, I think the direction was to modify the existing regulations so that you could have-
Level.
A deck, extend out level to the top of the seawall.
We all did not catch that. So, fine, we'll do that. I will bring your resolution soon to do that.
Yeah, it'll be a change in the order.
Alright, well-
Well, that's how, that's how that kind of conversation started. And then we got into different issues at the end. But it started by us all saying, yes, we were good with it.
We're not gonna have that step down?
Right.
Correct.
You, you could, but it doesn't, you can allow, you can elevate your deck to the top of the seawall.
So we'll bring you an ordinance first, we need at the October, at the November meeting.
You wanna also notify the resident?
They've already, that we've already done. The ones, the order, the varies that you denied and the current ones, we already did that. So Linda already did that, took that step. The Craig Smith report is as part of your agenda item. Couple of things that are important to understand. Our stormwater system, um, functions and it functions well. We're starting to see a lot more flooding in town because of ground saturations. We've now reevaluated all of the system. There's a minor repair that's needed in the north part of town system that is under my financial threshold. So we're gonna authorize that repair and that should alleviate the flooding that we're seeing on the north side of town near Singer Park. On North Island, it's a flat gate issue that we're, it's a maintenance issue that we're addressing and that will alleviate flooding on the north side of town. The flooding that we see on South Parkway has nothing to do with the system. It's all flooding based on tidal surge coming up through the ground and flooding our streets. And today, we did get some bad news. Has nothing to do with financing for our city hall. So just, I'll remind the community that the stormwater system has its own budget and funds itself. So the pump station here in town hall, um, works fine. It's, it functions very well. We're gonna make some adjustments to the way it operates to try to alleviate some of the seasonal flooding that we're getting in, in the south part of town. We'll bring that as a council action item when we're ready to do so. Right now, we're not ready to do so. But the report is very informative. It's twenty-something pages. It's on the website for our residents to read it. It talks about hydrology and how the water in the intercoastal is affecting our system. It talks about tidal surge and it talks about peak tidal, uh, influences. So if you have any question on the report, see me afterwards or ask me at So if you have any question on the report, see me afterwards or ask me for private meetings. But know that the flooding issues in town, we don't not stick our head into the ground like other animals do. We see issues, we address them. We hire engineers to do full reports, to analyze, bring recommendations, so we can adequately professionally respond to it. So when our residents say flooding in the streets and the administration is not listening, isn't here, we are. It just takes time to put together responsible approaches to fixing the issues. And that's what we've done too. So please read the report and know that everything within the report falls under my financial threshold. And we'll take the necessary actions to correct the issues that we're seeing in town.
You mentioned that there were several hot homes that had, uh.
Thirty-three of them.
The sea, right?
Yes.
The sea wall or, um, are, of those thirty-three, how many are going through, uh, sea wall renovations or?
Three.
And are we expediting those or are we doing something to?
So we're strong, so we, our approach has been carrot, not stick. So we've asked all the thirty-three homes to come in and meet with us and identify solutions to address the issues that are happening. The three that are current and permitting, they've been expedited. Um, they were there to begin with. Um, it's a matter of the house being built and all that other stuff. But a lot of the water that you're seeing in town is actually coming up through the ground.
Independent of the sea wall?
Independent of the sea wall. And that's why I mentioned earlier, and I know that we would wanna get out of here, but let me just remind everyone. Your code today requires you on an annual basis to take elevations of your property. And if your elevation doesn't meet the town's minimum elevation, it requires you to bring in fill, to fill your property to elevation. We know that that could be costly and burdensome to our residents. For, so for the last twelve years that I've been the manager, I've only exercised that code twice. On, on two properties that we saw water really affecting the streets. And both those houses came into compliance. They brought in fill and filled the property, water stopped. I publicly put the town on notice tonight that on properties where we're seeing groundwater coming up and it's, we believe it's because of an elevation issue, we will start using that section of our code to require those homeowners to bring in proper fill to maintain proper elevations. Your elevation and your compaction rate of your fill does affect the way water seeps up through the ground. And what we're starting to see in a lot of our homes is these underground rivers that are forming like little fingers where water's finding its way to the low point because the elevations aren't being maintained and the compaction of the fill isn't being maintained. So we, as, as sea level rises are occurring, and as you could tell, we're just gonna see an additional one point eight feet of water in our intercoastals. We have to be more responsible, which means sadly, that our residents need to be more mindful of the maintenance that's required when you live in a barrier island community.
What about a older home that was built in the nineteen forties or, or fifties that's very low line? Will compacting and adding more, that will help with that?
Yep.
And one other question. The new ordinance is that the sea walls have to be at least five, no greater than six.
Yep.
So if somebody is, if it's top, if the, if the intercoastal is toppling over their sea wall now and they're not quite at five, do they have to fix it now or did we make that ordinance where the change is when someone else buys the property?
No. So, so irrespective of the ordinance, when we have water coming over our cap, our ordinance allows us to ask for a new cap to be installed. Doesn't require a new wall, but it does require a new cap. And we can enforce that cap rule on any home, whether it's new or old. So if water comes over the cap, there's provisions within our code that allow us to demand for. And remember in two thousand and seven, when I was hired, you guys had, had that list. And you cited a bunch of houses and a lot, a lot of them came in. And then you said, wait, 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 only when water comes over? So we take an only when water comes over on enforcement of the cap issue. That's why the code allows us to enforce or not enforce when needed. Um, so we wait till water comes over and then we then ask for new caps. Because it is a cost, I mean, you're talking about easily for new cap, anywhere from nine hundred to twelve hundred dollars per linear foot for cap. And so we try to be respectful of our, our residents' bottom line, whether it be with our spending or with our enforcement issues.
On this corner, is it the electrical box or is it?
No, so, so.
Uh, on the corner of one ninety-four where there's water.